We'll call the meeting back to order. There was... The light's on. There I am. Okay, so we'll call this meeting back to order. There is nothing to report out of closed session. We'll move on to our regular meeting. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Sander. Councilmember McGarvey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Here.
And Mayor Terry.
Here. Item six. Clerk, will you please read the television announcement?
This meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council is being videotaped with closed captioning in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will be repeated Thursday, June 8th at 9:00 a.m. and Monday, June 12th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can be ordered from the City Clerk's Department, and a webcast of this meeting will be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. So we'll move on to item seven, the Pledge of Allegiance and the Invocation. Today we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Debbie Betancourt, and I'll invite the audience to stay standing for the invocation that will be by Bishop Gabriel Fink of the LDS Church, Mather Ward.
Ready, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have to be gathered here this beautiful afternoon. We are most grateful for the blessings that Thou hast bestowed upon us. We are grateful for this time in the history of the world that we live in. We're grateful for the blessings that Thou hast poured down upon the nations of the earth in advancements in technology, medicine, and innovations which help us to live healthy and strong lives. We pray that these blessings might be made available to all throughout the world through our generosity and kindness, that we might, when we have been blessed with these things, be blessed with a spirit of charity and of desire to see others enjoy these blessings as well. We humbly pray that Thou would bless the members of this council, that they would be blessed with wisdom as they seek to establish justice and equity amongst the people in this part of the world. We pray that Thou would bless them as they seek to replace the empty seat of Dan Skogland, that they would be blessed with wisdom in their decisions. Pray that Thou would bless the family of Dan Skogland as they are mourning the loss of their loved one, that they might find peace and rest and comfort. We're thankful, Father, for all the blessings and revelations which Thou hast given to this world, and blessing people in so many faiths and religions of the principles pertaining to the golden rule, that we might love one another and seek one another's happiness as we seek that for ourselves. We pray that Thou would bless the members of this council as they make their decisions, that they will uphold the sacrifices that have been made by so many that have come before us, that we might enjoy the blessings that we currently have. We pray that Thou would bless them, that they will seek to enact laws and instruction and counsel in their wisdom that will help bless the members in this part of thy world, that they might pursue life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness in peace and harmony with one another. We are grateful, again, for all of these things, and humbly pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We already dispensed with 9.0. There was nothing to report out of closed session, so we'll move on to presentations. David, did you want to take a moment of personal privilege to handle something?
I will. I'm armed with a very large check. And actually, this is the product of the Rancho Cordova... I want to be sure I get the name right. ...Community Golf Classic, which I think Mr. Mary Yu golfed in.
Twice?
Twice, a few weeks ago. It was an...
Only once this year, yes.
It was an enormous financial success, as it was last year. This event is put on every year by Ronnie Belka and Julie Hagan-Belka. This year, I think they raised about $80,000 for community efforts. And I was in a board meeting last week where they were presenting a check, and they handed me this one at the same time, and it's specifically appropriate, I think, for tonight to present this, because this one is made out to the Dan Skogland Memorial Fund for $2,500, courtesy of the great fundraiser put on by Ronnie and Julie Hagan-Belka. So here is the check. Here is the big check. They weren't able to be here, but I thought it was appropriate, and they asked that I present it to the council tonight.
Wonderful.
Very good.
So with that, we'll move on to 10.1. Call on Debbie Betancourt to present a proclamation. Okay. For those of you who don't know, our illustrious superintendent here, Debbie Betancourt, she gave us the sad news that she's moving on to retirement here pretty soon, so we have really sad news for her, right? So honoring Debbie Betancourt on the occasion of her retirement. Whereas Debbie Betancourt has worked in education since 1975 and is retiring from public service in 2017, and whereas Debbie has worked for the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District since 1997... That was when I graduated high school. And was appointed... No, I'm saying I'm young. And was appointed superintendent in 2010, and whereas Debbie has expertise in all areas of education business and has special insight in organizational structures and support services necessary to sustain both student achievement and enrollment growth, she used her financial knowledge to implement new programs and educational options such as Gate Academy, International Baccalaureate, Riverview Elementary STEM Academy, Montessori, and a technology program to provide a computer for every student in every classroom. And whereas, under Debbie's leadership, the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District passed nine bond measures to build new schools and modernize existing schools. The Measure M, 750 million bond, provides funding for new schools south of Highway 50, which will double the size of the district over 25 years. The measure earned 81% voter approval and is the largest school bond in Sacramento County history. Whereas during her tenure, the district built new schools, including Goldridge, Folsom High, SJ Galardo, Empire Oaks, Russell Ranch, Vista Delago, and Navigator. Mather Heights, Kitty Hawk, Cordova Lane, and Riverview Schools were reopened. Whereas Debbie was chosen by her peers as 2007 Administrator of the Year, was awarded the 2008 Sacramento Business Journal's CFO of the Year for a public agency, was honored as Educator of the Year by the Folsom Chamber, the 2017 Women in Leadership Award, and was Superintendent of the Year for Region Three with the Association of School Administrators. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Rancho Cordova thanks Debbie Betancourt for her significant contributions to education in the City of Rancho Cordova and wishes her well as she moves on into her next chapter of life. Congratulations. Can we take a picture?
I think you want to say a few words.
Speech!
Speech!
For those of you that know me, I don't like public speeches, but the council that's here and the one seat that's empty have done as much for our children as the school district have and so has. And so I want to thank you, your innovation, your steady voice, your fact-based, your passion, I'm pointing to each one of you as I think of those things, have really complimented what the school district has done. And so I want to thank you for the partnership with the city. Cyrus was a great hire. Keep him as long as you can, and I wish you well with your new superintendent. She is an educational leader herself, and she will bring the same kind of passion and innovation that we've had in our district and continue that. So thank you very much.
And next, we'll have Mr. McGarvey come down, and we'll call up Mr. Florrie. There he is. Boy, it's packed house tonight. So this is a presentation and proclamation and recognition of the City of Rancho Cordova Reinvestment and Housing Opportunities Division Manager Reed Florrie on the occasion of his retirement.
Proclamation. Hello, hello?
It doesn't want to work.
That's why I know.
Bob, I can't turn it on. Will you use the podium, please? Should work now.
Okay.
Wireless should work now.
Is that working now? Okay, good. Hate it when I'm not heard, you know? You know, I'm talking to myself. Proclamation honoring Reed Florrie on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas after a decade of service to the City of Rancho Cordova and over 44 years of public service, Reed Florrie is retiring. And whereas Reed continually thinks outside the box when faced with a challenge and consistently has discovered funding to solve city issues. And whereas in 2009 Reed was challenged to find a way using non-general fund money to demolish the infamous Stagger Inn. Because of his determination and problem-solving skills, he was able to use Neighborhood Stabilization Program NSP monies to complete the task. And that was fun, when you got that. Whereas Reed eloquently constructed the finance plan for crossing a new rancho using NSP grant funds and tax credits totaling over $7 million. This unique funding plan was groundbreaking at the state and local levels, meaning every step that Reed took, new policies and procedures had to be created. Whereas Reed was instrumental in the creation of Mather Veterans Village, an award-winning veterans' housing project which has brought to the City of Rancho Cordova state and national recognition. Whereas the Mather Veterans Village is a significant accomplishment for the city, Reed's role in pursuing funding, identifying key stakeholders in the regional, state, and federal level in addressing the complex issues and challenges that arose made it possible for this project to succeed. This project required significant collaboration, partnership, and innovative thinking to overcome hurdles and meet tight deadlines. See all the things you did? Reed works diligently and persistently to make this permanent affordable housing community a reality for veterans. Now therefore be it resolved, on behalf of the entire City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova, I want to express our sincere appreciation to Reed Florrie for his significant contributions to public service and to the City of Rancho Cordova, and which is him well, as he moves on to his next chapter in life. And witnesses whereof, our City Council, excuse me, our mayor, has set his hand and caused the seal of the City of Rancho Cordova to be affixed this 5th day of June 2017. Congratulations.
Mayor and council, just a few words about... I have had the honor and pleasure of working with Reed for almost 10 years, and I can say that he has been one of the most creative individuals that I have ever worked with. His energy, his passion, it's unparalleled. And Reed has had plans to retire about two years ago. We asked him to stay on a little longer as he was involved in a couple of key projects, mainly the Mather Veterans Village. I thank him. I truly am grateful to him for staying a little longer to see those projects through, and wish him well. The other thing that I would like to mention to the council, that Reed is now a city resident. He has moved, and he will be a member of our community, and I'm glad to have him in our community. Wish you well, Reed, and thank you for all you've done.
And with all the veterans, wanting to thank them, I have one here, Don, that wanted to say something for Reed also.
Hey, Don. Thank you, Reed. Thank you. My name is Don Harper. I am the chairman of the Veterans Affiliated Council of Sacramento and this area as well. I'm also American Legion Commander post 861. I'm here to represent the hundreds of veterans that Reed has helped in his project at the Mather Village. He has unique skill sets, I won't name them all. He has a lot of passion, and he just doesn't stop. Things are very complex funding-wise and everything else, way above my pay grade, by the way. But every time we got stuck as a veterans' community, we'd come to Reed, he'd come up with an answer somehow to navigate through the system. So on behalf of hundreds of veterans in this community, and particularly the veterans that are living at the Mather Village now, and particularly the veterans and families that are going to be living there in the future, they'll call that home. Again, they're going to call that home. That's very, very exciting. And that tribute goes to Reed and his hard work and the city staff as well, but on behalf of all the veterans in the community, we honor your work and all the best. Thank you.
Speech. Mayor and all members of the council, I really appreciate the sentiment related to success, but I probably appreciate more the ability to not be successful once in a while. And those were also part of the big picture, and I appreciate just the opportunity to combine success and a little failure upon occasion, and I thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to public comment. So citizens wishing to address the council for any matter on the consent agenda or not on today's agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the time on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to two minutes or less. We're lowering that a little bit today because of the amount of time we expect to be using. Speakers, also, please state your name and your community of residence. Under the provision of the California Government Code, the City Council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any public comment cards?
I do have. I have four speakers for public comment. The first one is Sharon Judy. Following Ms. Judy is George Roth.
Okay. Really briefly, I see that there's a lot of folks standing up in the back. We do have an overflow room in the American River Room where this meeting is being live-cast. If you have turned in a speaker card at any point, we will call people from there to come over, so you're not going to lose your spot, and you can still watch it. You don't have to stand in the back. There are chairs and air conditioning and whatnot.
Hi. My name is Sharon Judy. I live on Rockingham Drive. My community is very grateful for the granting us funds to fix our traffic issue. And by the way, it comes at a good time, because a week after I was here, one of our children almost got hit right in front of his parents. So this is going to be really nice for our community, and we'd really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My next speaker is George Roth. Following Mr. Roth is Wendy Weston.
I planned this for three minutes, because I read that online, so I have a three-minute speech prepared.
Yeah, we have a lot on the agenda. We can change that periodically. So your time has started, I would suggest you start.
So I'm not getting three minutes?
No. Clerk, will you please call the next speaker?
My next speaker is Wendy Weston. Following Ms. Weston is Andrea Tofola.
Hello, I'm Wendy Weston. I'm representing AMWEN Public Waldorf School, and this is my son, Alan. He's a kindergartner there. I just wanted to report back to you about the garden grant that you gave us for the 2016-17 school year for $10,000. We are working very hard and quickly on it. Finally, after some stress that we've had with the district deciding to finally put irrigation in, but choosing not to tell us when it was going to happen, so I appreciate your flexibility as we've had to alter that a little bit. We have put all of our energy into the middle school garden, because it's already got irrigation, so that has eliminated a lot of problems for us. Also, I think that it might have helped the district to actually start the irrigation for the rest of the school, because now I saw them digging a hole today, so thank you. We've been able to put in fencing, do some leveling of the ground. The middle schoolers are in there hacking out the privates. We've got planter beds coming in. We put in a... I forget the name of the granite pathway this weekend, so that we'll be able to have an ADA compliant area also for the upcoming students, and a little bit of an orchard. So we would like to know if we could present October 2nd and do a little presentation of what's happened for you. So I don't know how that goes about, but we would like to put on your actual calendar.
Yeah, we can work on that. Just touch base with Stacy Delaney, and she can probably...
Okay, thank you. Appreciate all your help.
Thanks for coming.
My next speaker is Andrea Tofola.
Good evening, Mayor Donald Terry, councilmembers and cyrus. My name is Andrea Tofola, and I am the facilitator for the program Youth at City Council funded by the extraordinary Community Enhancement Fund. And tonight, I'm here to invite the attendings of tonight's meeting, because I knew it was going to be a full one, to invite them to have their students between the ages of 14 to 18 apply to our summer program called Summer at City Hall. Summer at City Hall is a free four-week program that provides personal and professional development and civic engagement lessons to the attendees. We have extended the due date for June 16th, and I will have some applications. I'm going to go ahead and set them on the table when you first come into the city hall. This program will take place starting June 26th all the way to July 20th, and it will be here held at city hall, where the students will get to hear from guest speakers, work on a few projects, and learn firsthand a little bit more about their local government. So we're still taking applications, and the deadline will be June 16th. So I encourage all the attendees to please submit your application, especially if you don't want your students to be hanging around during the summer, and you want them to have something to do, this is a perfect opportunity. It'll be 9:30 to noon every single day from Monday... I'm sorry, Monday to Thursday. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is that all?
I have no more speakers for public comment.
So, council, I was going to request again, so that we can save some time here, especially for the folks that are standing up, if we could move our council reports till following the selection of the new member, that would be okay? And that would also go for the C manager's report. Hearing no objection, we'll dispense with those two for now. And move on to the consent calendar. So consent calendar consists of items deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Anything need to be pulled? Do you have any speaker cards for anything on the consent agenda?
I do not. Seeing that, I'll move approval of consent calendar items 14.1 through 14.10.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander. Councilmember McGarvey. Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
And Mayor Terry.
Hi.
And I have a request.
Let me get there first.
And actually, I would have put that into my council report.
Let's...
But I would request, first of all, that we add items 19.1 and 19.2 to the consent public hearing calendar, and I would make that motion.
So you want to... Okay, so we're going to take 19.1 and 2, add them to 18?
Yes. There are no issues on either item, and they will be a tremendous addition to our economy.
Is there any objection to moving those two to 18? Let me check that first. I don't think we need a roll call for that. However, I believe you now...
Motion.
Do we need...
I'll second the motion.
Roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Now, I believe you wanted to take them out of order.
And then I would ask that we go ahead and hear the consent public hearing items, item 18. So that would be 18.1, 19.1, and 19.2.
Any objection? Okay. So with that...
And I would make that motion.
I don't think we need a motion to take something out of order.
Okay.
Do we? Yeah. Okay, so we're moving on to 18. So consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item, all items will be approved by one motion. So with that, we'll move on to 18.1, Resolution Approving Proceedings for the Annual Levy and Collection of Assessments for the Rancho Cordova Road Maintenance District for Fiscal Year 1718. So with that, I will open the public hearing. Do you have any comment cards on this one?
I have no speaker comment cards for 18.1, 19.1, or 19.2.
Okay. So I guess we could take this all... Actually, let me just read the... You want me to read the other two in?
Actually, Vice Mayor Budge's motion was to move them to the consent calendar and then take the consent calendar at this time.
As a public...
So it can be approved with one vote.
Okay. Any comments on any of these three? No? Okay. Close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
Then I would move approval of items 18.1, 19.1, and 19.2.
So I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey. Councilmember Sander. Vice Mayor Budge. And Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay. Now, after all that fancy stuff, we're on 15.1, which I'm guessing is why most of you are in this room, or at least 19 of you are in this room. So regular calendar item, City Council Vacancy Discussion and Possible Appointment and Swearing In of New Council Member. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff, to Adam.
Thank you, mayor, members and council. We are pleased to have conducted a thorough application process for the council vacancy. At a prior city council meeting, the council gave direction that it wanted to proceed with filling the seat that was left by Councilmember Skogland's vacancy by process of an application process and the selection, the interview of candidates for that position. We have received a number of applications. A small number of the applications that were initially filed have been withdrawn. The clerk can give you the final tally of those that have chosen not to participate. But we are here tonight to proceed with the council's consideration of the applicants. All applicants for the position will be given the opportunity to speak as to your qualifications and to highlight any of the information that you've provided to the council and the community in your application. We will also have an opportunity for all the members of the public who are here to address the council on this item and your preferences and comments on the item. We will then turn it back to the council for deliberations and structuring the discussion consistent with the mayor's desires. And the council is authorized here tonight to make a final selection to fill the vacancy, and the council could entertain proceeding with swearing in the applicant whom you select this evening, or with postponing that swearing in to the next city council meeting. With that, given the number of applicants who are here to speak, I will dispense with any further more detailed staff report.
Thank you. So I think what we'll do for... We'll have each applicant speak for two minutes, and depending on how many comment cards are turned in, I think what we might want to do to hear from the public but still be able to dispense with the business tonight is probably limit to two commenters per applicant.
Well, that's not appropriate.
Well.
No, that's not appropriate. You've already limited the number, you've already limited the time, which was appropriate, but this is a public theory.
To all comments. Well, I'm, this is just a suggestion, so just go ahead, go ahead.
The people who came should have an opportunity to speak.
Okay, okay. Is that how the rest of the council feels?
I remember chairing in our team meeting where we had 105 comments on something. And I think at that point, as chair, when with board acquiescence, we limited it to a minute. But I, I don't know how many we have, so time obviously is flexible, but everyone should get a chance to say something.
I think you're right, you'd have an opportunity also.
So let's see how many comment cards are turned in. So again, if you want to make a comment on any applicant, please turn in a comment card to the city clerk. After the applicants have discussed, we'll figure out how many we have and decide on the amount of time. That's how.
Mr. Mayor. I also. I would also like to, for, if the city clerk, to identify those applicants who have withdrawn their names. I think this would be an appropriate time to point out those candidates.
And perhaps also just reading the entire list of applicants who remain.
So we do have, we had a few applicants that withdrew. There is a list at the back of the room of the order that presentations will be made. We have Ethan G. Wolf, David Hunn, Susan Fasano, Garrett Gatewood, Teresa Marie Colvinbach, Vanessa Martinez, Catherine Cooley, Conrad Mayer, Brian Martin Rojas, Valerie Jean Martin, Troy Kanarsky, Adam Kessler, Zach Zawald, Robert Ponce, Lee M. Frichette, Andrea McDonald, Matthew Cummings, Natalie Martin Rojas, and Daryl Langwell. The following two candidates are not able to be here tonight, but have not withdrawn. It's Michelle Tovar and Michael Zeklin.
And the withdrawn candidates?
Withdrawn candidates. So I did receive notice today that Brian Danzel is no longer running, or is no longer an applicant. And Marcus MacArthur.
And Dennis Dunn.
And Dennis Dunn withdrew earlier this week.
Okay. So with that, we'll call up.
Could I make a framing comment? I don't know if anyone else wants to.
Sure.
This is actually not a decision I think many of us up here want to make. It's not a decision we chose, because none of us wanted to lose Dan. So it's kind of a hard decision on that basis. But on the other hand, we have really great applicants, and you sort of feel like the coach of the All-Star team, right? Which you got to figure out, who do you put in? You got a lot of talent. You know, what do, what do we need on the field? It's a, it's a tough, unwanted decision, but we are doing something special here, and we did debate this a little bit two meetings ago, or was it just last meeting?
Last meeting.
About whether to do an election or an appointment. And there are pros and cons both ways. The appointment actually allows us to choose someone who maybe would not normally get elected. Because election skills are sometimes different from what you want in governing, or policy, or, or board member skills. So it's an interesting opportunity to kind of balance a council through this process, at least that's my point of view. But I want to give you guys a last chance to be really careful about what you're asking yourself to do. Consider carefully what this is. And I'll be a little blunt. This changes you, this job. You will probably never be the same after you assume this job. I will give you a funny example. Linda, our colleague here, went to Paris, and she came back and she was showing us photographs of Paris. She showed us photographs of the public toilets, of the curbs, and of the fire hydrants. Now, the joke was, Linda, turn around, you missed the Eiffel Tower. This job changes you. You don't look at the world the same way anymore. You also, if you have a family, prepare to hear your spouse, children, significant other, whoever, get really sick of hearing you comment about all the stuff that's going on in public because you cannot get away from this job. If you're in another jurisdiction, you're looking to see what they've done. If you're in your own jurisdiction, you're looking for problems. If you're at the grocery store, someone's telling you, hey, can you do something about this? If you're at church, someone's telling you, hey, can you do something about this? You can't get away from it. You'll dream about it. You wake up in the middle of the night worried about it. And frankly, it's a burden. You think that 70,000 people plus, plus about that many jobs rely in part on decisions we make here. That is a really big deal. And that, I think, weighs on all of us. We all feel that pressure. And so I want you to be really clear what you're asking for as an applicant. I also want to say, this is the big leagues for community engagement. This is all of us, I think, in the history of Rancho Cordova, have had a lot of stuff that we've done in the community before we got here. And this job requires leadership. The sort of leadership that says, I have a vision about where we want to go, and then you find a group of people who want to go with you, or maybe don't. Maybe they don't want to go with you. They don't want to pay the price you want them to pay, they don't want to go the route you want to go, they don't want to go where you want to go. But when you get there, they thank you for having done it. That's what leadership is about. That's what this job is about. It's not about two meetings a month, goodness help us. It's definitely not two meetings a month. 20 meetings a month might be more accurate. So, I think all of us are looking for people who will fit that role we need in this All-Star game, that have the specific skills we need, and who have a proven commitment to Rancho Cordova. And you know, in the end, unfortunately, tonight, there's going to be one person we pick. I think tonight, we'll probably end up with one person. Because we can only see one person. The rest of you, there is a plethora of opportunities in Rancho Cordova, things you can do, things we need you to do. This is not it. This is, this is one avenue. There are lots others. We're standing up a planning commission, most likely soon. That'll be a council appointment. We'll, we'll do that, hopefully, from people in this room. There are community, there's the community council board, the chamber board, there's other nonprofit activities in Rancho Cordova. There's a ton of things you can help with in this community. This is not the only one. And if you're not chosen for this, I think all of us would like to say we'd like to see you in those other jobs. So with that, that's your last opportunity to get out. And I'm going to hand it back to Donald, and he's going to make you talk.
Well, but now that you went, David, I'll ask if the other councils have any guidance to give to the applicants before they speak.
I'm only going to add a couple things to that. Those of you who may not have read it, we were given an opportunity to have candidates put in and let us see what they are thinking about, and we got those. We also could have done a special election. The register of voters said the register, the election would have cost the city fee to $700,000. The election wouldn't have been until October. The person would have been sworn in November. So, that's $300,000 to $700,000 for one year. And that's kind of an expensive election. So what we're going to do is appoint someone. But think about this, November of next year is election again. And any and all who are interested in the city council, you can put in your name again. The only thing is, you'll be campaigning, and it'll cost time, and it'll cost money that you may not be thinking about right now. So an appointment is one thing, but think about a campaign. Because even the person who is going to be appointed tonight, maybe, will be, again, he's finishing, she's finishing Dan Skoglan's job for a year and a half. But this one for November of next year is going to be for four years. As Dan is, David said, there are an awful lot more meetings than two a month. Not just Monday, the first and the third Mondays of the month. There are many more. So, thank you all for showing us the interest. You know, when we voted in 2002, there were 21 candidates for five seats. One of the 21 didn't want us to be a city, which I thought was kind of odd. But now we've got 24 initially, now 22 for one seat. Now that shows some interest in this city, and thank you.
So after all those cheering messages, my comment is welcome, everybody.
I don't think I have anything else to really add. I think everything was it. And so with that, we'll move on to our first candidate or applicant, Ethan G. Woff. Am I pronouncing that right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for hearing me today and considering me Athan G. Woff, for the position of councilperson. I know on paper, I may not be the most qualified for this position. However, I do feel I bring a unique combination of skills and experience that will make me a valued member. I am currently the CEO and broker of GQ North Commercial. My experience in commercial real estate has put me on the receiving end of several city I understand how the choices that we make, the policies that we pass affect our city. I think my philosophy is in line with Rancho Cordova, as I am a fiscal conservative and a social moderate. I understand the importance of the delicate partnership between government and business. During the economic downturn, I was able to successfully help business owners and property owners, many of whom reside in Rancho Cordova, to come up with a strategy to weather the storm. I know this type of out-of-the-box thinking is welcome on this council, and I think it would be a good addition. My time in the Army has taught me patience, leadership, and teamwork, all of which I think would be valued to this council. The military gave me a global perspective, helping me to view policies not only from my personal eyes, but from the eyes of everybody affected by them. Ultimately, I enjoyed my career in the military, but felt I had to give it up in order to devote myself to family. And I chose Rancho Cordova as a place to settle down and do that. My separation from the Army was necessary for me to move on in life. However, it left me feeling a wanting or a void. I truly enjoyed public service. I feel this would be the ideal position for me, not only to help fill that void, but to allow me to give back to my community once again.
Mr. G. Woff, your second, your two minutes has expired. Will you make your final comment?
Yep. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We'll move on to David Hunn.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for having me here today and hearing what I had to say. I've been in Rancho Cordova for quite a long time, for 32 years to be exact. I've, I graduated at Cordova High. My first job was at the Roundtable on Sunrise Boulevard. I grew up here, my whole adult life was here. You talked about leadership, Mr. Sander. I am currently a partner at an engineering firm. Got my engineering degree in 1997, due to your graduate high school. And, you know, a lot of folks, when I achieved some level of success, told me that I should go to Folsom or El Dorado Hills. I reject that argument. Rancho Cordova is my home. I was on the board of Act of 2030, did a lot of work with the children here in Rancho. I did, formulated the plans for the parking at Air Show after that first year that was a debacle. I wrote the plan for the next two years, and they still use it today. We use that money to give back to the children at the Mather Program. That was one of the, one of the greatest moments of my life, seeing those kids and helping them out. So civic engagement, leadership are cornerstones of my life, and I want to continue to give back to Rancho. It's, it's my home, and I want to help wherever I can. Thank you very much.
Next, we'll have Susan Fasano.
And Ms. Fasano did not check in with us this evening.
Okay.
So we might want to call her up later.
She by chance in the other room? Hopefully not. Okay. Move on to Garrett Gatewood.
Still good, Hun? You heard all the comments? Okay. Mr. Mayor, member of the council, thank you for the opportunity to offer myself for consideration as appointee of Rancho Cordova City Council. I'm a passionate man, passionate about my faith, my family, and this community. Rancho Cordova is an amazing community to work and live. Being a small business owner, I represent a panoramic perspective. As an IT professional, computer science specialist, I offer a progressive position in incorporating technologies in the city and the hacker lab. Our city must be positioned as the region leader for technology infrastructure for business and residents. I'm also proud of the path I've chosen. I started my own business here and located in Rancho Cordova. My wife chose to make our home in Rancho Cordova, in large part due to the amazing city that you guys have created. I made the decision to be an engaged citizen. I'm a Little League coach, a soccer coach, a member of the religious community at River City Christian, a member of the board at Ranger, Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, and a board member of two nonprofits, helping out to find veterans in this area jobs. The council has accomplished good work, and I would hope to incorporate in the future. I promise to support your vision by continuing to respect the vulnerable population of our veterans and homeless, being unwavering in developing and maintaining strong unified neighborhoods, and by being uncompromising in my quality and standards and 360 design for all facilities. Ensuring the needs of our future is woven into the city council goals. In this application, I made a statement, I'd like to reiterate here. I do not believe that the role of city councils to simply be one voice, but rather five voices, five unique voices, who come together for the best of our community. I would be honored to have my voice thrown alongside yours on behalf of Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Teresa Marie Colvinbach, Colvinbach, excuse me. I should know how to say that by now.
More commonly known as Tara.
More commonly known as Tara. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, it is with a heavy heart that I stand before you as we remember the loss of Dan Skoglan. I would like to continue his dream of making Rancho Cordova the nicest and safest community in the Sacramento region. His vision included educational excellence, robust musical programs, and the arts. I would be honored and humbled to become a member of this city council that has a clear vision and the fortitude to consistently vote for fiscal prudency and positive change. In addition, we should all be proud of the thoughtful growth that is happening on your watch. I believe through additional civic engagement and education, we could continue to work with residents to improve the quality of our community. While you might know me from my work in the Whisker Warriors, I have a diverse background that I believe makes me an ideal candidate to continue Dan's legacy. I have worked for profit, nonprofit organizations, I have held a government position, and I've been self-employed. My current position in banking offers me financial discipline, strong risk management, and in-depth analytical skills. I believe I possess the kind of emotional intelligence that would make me a great addition to the council. I am a kind of Renaissance woman that can help our city reach its full potential, the best city in California. I want other cities to come to us and ask, how did you do it? How did you become the best? And my reply will be, because we have a committed city staff, engaged city council, and residents who truly care. I want this great city to shine, and I'm willing to use my elbow grease to polish it. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll call up Vanessa Martinez. If we can hold the applause, that'll allow us to get through these a little bit faster.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Vanessa Martinez, and first of all, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to be here in front of you. And as I look around the room, I see a lot of people that are very passionate and excited to bring change to the city. But when I think about myself, I think about the future. And I am the future of the city. And I want to be able to work with the rest of the youth in the community so that we can continue to be the change for the future and the generations to come. I want people to be able to raise their families here and to realize that Rancho Cordova is their home. And I want to continue working with the city, as I have done for the last 13 years, since I am only 23. And I want to be able to be that change. And I am excited for the future and for the change regardless of the outcome tonight. And I am very excited to continue working with the city, and I look forward to the decision that the council will make. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Catherine Cooley.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My family moved to Rancho Cordova when I was eight years old because they believed in the community and they wanted to positively contribute to it. I grew up in Rancho Cordova schools, and I graduated from Cordova High School as its valedictorian. I then went off to college, and while I was in college, I was able to see the incorporation effort happen. And it was very exciting to me and inspiring to me, and that's the reason why. And that's the reason why I chose government as my career, actually. I've been doing that for the last 11 years, and I've developed a broad range of experience. Most recently, I'm getting my master's from USC in public administration, and that's a program that's ranked fourth in the nation regarding these programs. And I would bring all of that experience to bear on this appointment. I'm also a big believer in community service, whether that be co-chairing the local government module for Leadership Rancho Cordova for six years, or writing grant applications that have brought a local respite club more than $500,000 in operating revenue. The thing that I am most proud of is the Regional Citrus Heights Veterans Standout Event. I started that event personally from nothing. And we turned it into an annual event. It serves 70 veterans every year with wraparound services, and they are assisted by more than 130 volunteers. I'm really proud of it. But most importantly, I'm a mom of three, and they are my inspiration for everything that I do. And I have chosen to raise them in the city of Rancho Cordova because I believe in it and because I think it's awesome. And I think other young families should move here, too. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, we will have Conrad Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Conrad Mayer, and I'm seeking the task of appointment this evening. I have lived and served in this community for approximately 50 years, and I've been asked to support, chair, fight, raise money, rescue events, and endorse people currently representing our community. I have put in the work long before and after we have become a city. We have a lot of work to still do. We have very little representation north of Highway 50, and we will continue to grow south with new residents that will know very little of the history of why we became a city, and they will have additional quality of life issues as well. Our city could start to separate and lose its ability to do the things incorporation was meant to do. These comments weren't meant to separate, but to keep Rancho Cordova whole and satisfy our mission of incorporation. We need youthful leaders, youthful vocational and tradespeople. And I've been on those trenches, helping to provide our future leaders and workforce for the last, for the next 30 years. I am proud to have received a citizenship award when I was attending Mills Junior High School in 1976, honorary mayor of the Rancho Cordova Fourth of July in 2003 and '04, the Rancho Cordova Chamber of City Citizens of the Year in 2006, and a distinguished service award for the Cordova Community Council in 2011. And my most proud accomplishment is my Rancho Cordova, Rancho Cordovan of the Year in 2012. Team awards that I've been a part of, I've led our Rotary Club to a medium club of the year in 2009, 2010, when I was the president of it. And interacting with young ladies like Vanessa Martinez, who is here before us today, is one of my major accomplishments that I take real pride in, and I am so happy that she is here tonight. Auto shop, football, or many other titles that I have hoped bring proudness to this community.
Mr. Mayor, your time has expired. Make your final comment.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to Brian Martin Rojas.
Mr. Mayor and council, my name is Brian Martin Rojas. I'm a recent transplant to the city. Three years ago, my wife and I decided to start our home here in Cordova Vineyards on Aramont Drive. I've spent my entire professional career working with local government, anything from local campaigns to working under the California Voting Rights Act to take at-large elections and move them to districted elections across the state, and working with the Citizens Redistricting Commission. And now today, I'm a public servant with the City of Sacramento. I handle our performance metrics, and I collaborate with different regional organizations so that we can provide services to our residents. And I'd like to bring that same kind of professionalism here, and that same experience, to build upon what we've already built, or what you've already built in Rancho Cordova. If appointed, there are three main policy issues that I feel very strongly about. Rancho Cordova is a growing community. We're connecting the entire southern region to the northern region, as you can see on the map over there. And I want to attract businesses and new residents to these areas as the city expands through smart growth and continuing to use our business-friendly environment to build upon current development incentives used by the city. Next, I want to continue pursuing local partnerships. As we talked about earlier, there was a great example of a success that we just recently have had with the Mather Veterans Village. That was together with the Mercy Housing of California and the Veterans Resource Center of America, together with the City of Rancho Cordova. And I can bring my own experience working collaborative partnerships to continue working and pursuing those types of partnerships. Lastly, public safety is a strong concern of mine in the community. And public safety spending takes up the largest portion of the city of Rancho Cordova's budget. So I'd like to explore alternatives to simply spending more to increase effectiveness and move towards creating a citizens oversight committee to raise the profile of local law enforcement and our public safety employees so that they become more visible, so that residents feel more protected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brian. Next, we'll have Valerie Jean Martin.
Thank you, Mayor Terry, and council members. I really appreciate this opportunity to address you. I have lived in Rancho Cordova a little over 10 years. I'm a retired school teacher with a Master of Science in teaching mathematics at the middle school level. So I think you might understand that I have no problem with leadership and organization. I was a single mother of four when I attended UC Berkeley. I finished two bachelor's degrees in psychology and Native American study, and then went into teaching. I am, I have been a tutor in the Rancho Cordova area for about 10 years. And I worked very hard to make sure that students who were not at the top of the class understood their concepts. I also ended up working with their parents in issues where letters needed to be written to the school district, where they needed advocacy to find help with special education, because I can. And I have always felt that it's very important to give of yourself to the community. I have my entire life. I once heard a very great man speak about choosing what you can do for your country or your community, rather than what they can do for you. And I have taken that to heart my entire life as a Girl Scout leader, Cub Scout leader. And I would love the chance to serve with you on the city council. I'm not going to take any more time, and thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Troy Knarski.
Good evening, council. My name is Troy Knarski, and I've lived in this community for 21 years. When I first moved into this great city, it wasn't a city, I got this red flyer on my porch. And I was wondering what this red flyer was, and it said "Five-a-Month Club." So I picked it up, excuse me, and I signed off, $5 a month. And Dave Roberts was the one that started this brochure together. And so they said at one point, "We need more people to help out with the city to make this happen." And so what I did is I went to the meeting, and if Dave Roberts was the train that was running down the track, there was another gentleman there that would keep on going and keep it steady, and that was Bob McGarvey. And he was the chair of the community at that time. So we collected signal, or signatures, and we moved forward, and the city came forward, and we voted on, and we became a city. And so I was helping with that. And within a year after the city became a vibrant city, I was lucky enough to be appointed to the Planning Commission. I served on the Rancho Cordova Planning Commission for eight years, and it was a great honor. So with that, and since then, I've also established the Sun River Neighborhood Association, which was great people working together for the Sun River area. In addition to that, in the last couple of years, I coached at Mitchell as a basketball coach. And then I've been also a scoutmaster in the last couple of years, raising children instead of being on the planning commission or those type of things. Excuse me. I want to say that the city council has done an excellent job in bringing forward our goals and objectives, the six objectives that the city has, has done an excellent job. Rancho Cordova has the best reputation in the county as being a team player and always looking forward and being professional. So we all, as citizens, need to thank them for that. With that, I'd like to summarize and say that you've done an excellent job in the revenue neutrality payment. It used to be for 20 years, I believe it was, for approximately $20 million, and now it's down to about $9 million. Each one of those dollars helps our city and our memberships become a better city and giving them more services. So I appreciate the time tonight and being in front of you. And I thank you for your service, and I'd like to serve with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to Adam Kessler.
Hi, my name is Adam Kessler. I am a single working parent. I've lived in Rancho Cordova for five years now. And I am a master's in MBA. I also have a bachelor's in business administration and political science. My goal is here is to provide a unique perspective to the city council with all of the experience I have. I've been working in non-for-profit and property in the last couple of years for over a decade. My experience is both finance, IT, and accounting in the background. My goal is to provide a great city that I've enjoyed moving to. I was lucky enough to come here through unforeseen circumstances, and I've enjoyed living here. I hope that I can provide for this community and the council. And I also want to thank their time in listening to me. I definitely know on paper, I am not the best candidate, but I hope that my desire to provide a good community for my son and all the kids involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Jax Wald.
Good evening, Mayor Terry, members of the council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you about my application for Rancho Cordova City Council. My name is Jax Wald. I'm a budget analyst with the California Department of Finance. I serve on the Sacramento County Public Health Advisory Board, and I'm a member of the Rancho Cordova Kiwanis. In my job, I manage the state's $3 billion support budget for the University of California and advise decision-makers on how to improve educational outcomes while controlling costs. As a member of the Public Health Board, I work to address pressing public health issues, including our county's opioid epidemic. And as a Kiwanian, I am dedicated to the future of Rancho Cordova's youth. In short, I'm a public finance professional with a passion for serving my community. I want to help this community thrive, to pursue a vision of smart growth, prudent management, and opportunity for all. As a member of the city council, I will be a tireless advocate for transit-centered development, open space, and walkable communities. I will also be a strong voice for economic development, focusing on retaining Rancho Cordova's solid manufacturing base while pursuing new high-tech and green-tech firms. And I will not favor in my support of our police and firefighters who keep our community safe. Also, and I believe just as importantly, I will be a good steward of our city budget, and I will work for the best fiscal health of our city. I have a sustainable management of our finances, ensuring our city can serve its citizens in all economic climates. I'm excited for Rancho Cordova's future. My wife Brittany and I love living here. We love that this is a city where we can spend a Sunday out on the American River Parkway and then go taste some new craft brews in our barrel district, and finish with a trip to the Best Store in Sacramento County, the KP International Market. I hope to serve this fantastic city. I hope you'll consider my application favorably. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Ponce.
I like KP, too.
I think we all do.
Yeah, it's a good place. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished members of the council, honorable mayor. My name is Robert Ponce, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My wife Claire and I moved to Rancho Cordova after I left the military. We saw a city with tremendous growth and opportunity, and over the last eight years, that trend has continued. We own a small bakery on Sunrise Boulevard, and I enjoy serving the citizens of this community every day. My professional background, I served in the United States Navy for eight years. For most of that time, I was stationed on the aircraft carrier Theodore Roosevelt. I was deployed many times in support of Operation Enduring and Iraqi Freedom. I also did a tour in Jabal Ali, as well as a short tour in Atsugi, Japan. My education and background, I earned an associate's degree while I was in the service. A few years ago, I earned my bachelor's in management, and I am proud to say I graduated with honors. I'm currently pursuing my MBA, and in 2018, I'll be pursuing a psychology degree with the University of San Francisco. I also hold an FCC license, a Department of Defense security clearance, and I have received leadership certification from UC Davis. The military has taught me a lot about commitment and leadership. Being a small business owner has taught me about negotiating and serving others. And my six-month-old has taught me the most important lesson of all: patience. I live, work, and play in Rancho Cordova. I started a family here. My wife and I started our business here. And I would like to continue serving my community as I once did for my country. I humbly ask for your consideration for this position, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ponce. Next, we have Lee Frichette.
Almost forgot my eyes. Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Lee Frichette, but you know that. I would like you to consider appointing somebody you have known and watched in action for more than 15 years. Like you, I'm thrilled to see all the residents that are here tonight. And while there are many interesting possibilities, the list of those who have been walking and talking for many years is really very short. I have a broad background as a field engineer. I also have extensive experiences in development from both sides of the table. I was the operating manager of my family's Bay Area development company, which built thousands of homes and commercial buildings. But I've also been on the government side of that dynamic while serving as the planning director of the Cordova Recreation and Park District. I have negotiated development agreements, worked with tax engineers, and even helped write your city master plan section on parks and recreation. I have volunteered thousands of hours to our community. Many of my contributions have become so much a part of city life that most people have forgotten how we got here. But my, that's what my supporters agree, that the city council is a place where community experience counts. When I think of the future of our city, I see boundless possibilities. I see a robust economy, plenty of jobs, and safe, caring communities. I see thriving arts, world-class youth sports, and exciting public events. I see a vibrant, innovative city that captures the imagination of those who live here now and those who will arrive because of it. I see it. I believe it. And I've already been working toward it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Andrea McDonald. Andrea or Andrea?
Andrea.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm new to Rancho Cordova. We've been here a year and a half. I've lived in numerous communities. I lived in the Central San Joaquin Valley in Utah, in the East Bay, and then now here. And when we first moved here, we rented for a year and searched all the different communities to find the perfect fit. And this is the one that we chose. People told me I was crazy. And I pointed out all of the wonderful things that we have going, going on here, and the forward thinking that's going along with it. I just, last week, decided to take this, or apply for this position. And so Friday, I got that really thick agenda, okay? And had, what, like, three days to go through that. And I poured through it, did lots of research, and found even more exciting things that are going on here. And I think that's a wonderful way to give back to a community or to give to a community. I'm so impressed with things like the Rancho Cordova, the natural, Cordova Creek Naturalization Project, the Free Trees Program, the community programs that pair up the police with the community itself. I think that is a critical issue to addressing public safety. And I've traveled throughout the world and never first class. And I've always taken it upon myself to go outside the scope, to go walk through neighborhoods, to go talk to people who have businesses. And it's possible to talk to people even if you don't speak their language. And I observe and I talk, and I find out that we all share the same problems and the same concerns, but how we solve them is different. So what I would bring, I think, is fresh eyes to our community. community. I am from the outside, and so I have different, perhaps, views. I haven't grown up here.
Ms. McDonald, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment, please?
Well, I just find this very exciting, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Matthew Cummings.
Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of the council. Good evening, Rancho Cordova. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. You know, in my 16 years of service to the community, and as a teacher for over two decades, I've learned many lessons about what it takes to run a city. The first lesson is that Rancho Cordova's story is still to be written. To ensure that it continues in a positive direction, it takes everyone to join the conversation: residents, city leaders, and our incredible faith-based and professional organizations. I've also learned that it takes more than mere desire to lead. I've learned that City Hall must play an active role in that success, that the people we place behind the dais must have the most experience possible. When taken through that lens, I can claim my experience far exceeds that of any other sole candidate. Let me take you through some of it. Six years on the Planning Commission, helping to craft the general plan and design guidelines, serving currently on the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Committee to help slow down traffic on neighborhood streets, forming the Lincoln Village Neighborhood Association, forming the Rancho Cordova Alliance of Neighborhoods, as well as the Capital Village Homeowners Association. Rancho Cordova is a great place to live. It succeeds when we draw upon the talents of everyone. And if so selected, I will find innovative ways to better link our neighbors, the business community, and our civic and faith-based organizations. These three groups represent the heart of our city, and without them, cityhood would never have taken root. These aren't glib comments. They represent the real progress I wish to make in taking over for Councilmember Schoigland. And while I can never replace him, I can honor his memory by continuing the good work we've started to make Rancho Cordova an even better place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Natalie Martin Rojas.
Council members and mayor, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Natalie Martin Rojas, and I am thrilled to be considered for the City Council vacancy. I'm a recent Rancho Cordova resident, and my background is modest. I was raised in rural Fresno County by parents who were members of the working poor for most of my childhood. I studied hard, earned the title of valedictorian, and went to college. It was there that I learned about community empowerment and the role of everyday people in government. Upon graduation, I was inspired and pursued a career in politics and public service. My career took me places across the country, from small towns like Greencastle, Indiana, to large urban cities like Boston, Massachusetts. Six years ago, I returned to California with renewed love for our state and its incredible economic and cultural diversity. Three years later, my then-fiancee and I bought our first home here in Rancho Cordova just a few months before I turned 30. Well, buying a first home is always a big accomplishment. Our little house represented all that my parents had sacrificed so that I could embark on the kind of career that would give me the economic stability to make such a purchase. As a resident, I have come to appreciate the investments the city has made and would like to help steer the policy decisions that drive the future of my city. Rancho Cordova is a fast-growing city that needs council members who are comfortable with policymaking and sensitive to the variety of needs of its residents. As a legislative analyst for the California Department of Consumer Affairs, I have analyzed potential laws and wrote recommendations to the governor. Some of the amendments I've written have actually become state law. I also bring a strong community advocacy perspective to my work and have experience making policies and politics accessible to all residents. Lastly, as a young professional woman of color, I would like to provide a voice for our city's increasingly diverse population. Through my personal and professional experiences, I have seen firsthand how well-meaning policies can exacerbate delicate issues if poorly executed. If selected, I will prioritize the safety and security of all of our residents, enact policies that will help provide jobs for those who live in our city, and promote the creation of healthy, connected communities as our city continues to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Darryl Langwell. Darryl.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Darryl Langwell. I live in the Vineyards neighborhood. I've lived in Rancho Cordova for 24 years. I'm just a simple old farm boy, so what you see is what you get. I would be deeply honored to be selected to fill the vacancy created by the passing, untimely passing of Dan Schoigland. I'm sure you reviewed my application, have asked yourself what I've done for the city. I don't belong to any community group and haven't participated in many community activities. What I have done for almost the past three years is be a regular attendee at the City Council meetings and workshops. I would estimate my attendance to be around 80% or higher. After the first meeting I attended, I realized that every item on the agenda was of importance to the city in its entirety. It was then that I decided I needed to be a regular attendee to see what was happening where I live. I see many people that come to the meetings and stay until the item that they are interested in is discussed, then they leave. I stay for the entire meetings, at least one time, until almost midnight, to see what effect the decisions that are made will have throughout the city. Even though a decision might appear to affect only a small area, the result will probably have some sort of ramification throughout the entire city. Many times, I just sit and listen to the discussion concerning the items on the agenda, but on occasion, I have spoken in favor or opposition to an item when I felt I had something to offer. As stated before, I do not belong to any community group. I do not have any pet project that I represent. I have no special agenda that I represent. I owe no allegiance to any group or individual. If selected, I will try to represent the citizens and city as a whole. I would work to see the city of Rancho Cordova to thrive and prosper. It would be nice to see half this many people at every City Council meeting to show their interest in this city.
Mr. Langwell, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment?
If I'm selected, I will not run in 2018 because I think the citizens deserve the opportunity to select their next representative. Thank you for your time and consideration.
With that, I'm going to check one more time. Is Susan Fasano joining us? Okay. We have two candidates that were not able to attend tonight. One submitted a written statement to the city clerk, which I'll have read into the record at this point.
Thank you. The statement from Michelle Tovar states, "My name is Michelle Tovar, and I wanted to thank the council in Rancho Cordova for allowing me this opportunity to have my statement read as I am currently out of the state. I was born and raised in Sacramento and moved to Rancho Cordova 10 years ago. Rancho Cordova is where my husband and I bought our first home, brought home our first puppy, welcomed our two children, and have also conducted aspects of my career here. I have set our roots here, and I am very proud of the community my family and I live in. Having served almost nine proud years in the federal government as a biologist gave me the perspective on learning to the needs of others, including small and large businesses in Sacramento County and surrounding areas. In addition, I now work at a private small business where I serve my clients by assisting them in navigating federal environmental laws. I know that my background in both public and private service will bring a worthwhile perspective to our council and the city. Not only working in Sacramento County, but having been a Sacramento County resident all my life, fuels my passion for helping to make our community a destination: a destination for competitive schools, a destination for living in a safe, diverse neighborhood, a destination to raise your young family and work in business centers all around our city, a destination to open and grow your small business, a destination for recreation along the American River Parkway that gets our children out exploring nature. I hope I get a chance to serve the City Council and the community of Rancho Cordova to continue the upward momentum of our city. Thank you all for your time."
Okay, thank you. So with that, we have heard from all candidates. Do we want to have any discussion at this point, or do we just want to go on to the public comment portion?
Public comment.
Okay. How many speaker cards do you have? Ballpark.
Mr. Mayor, I have 30 speaker cards.
With one minute apiece?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one?
Thirty-two.
Two. We've had other agenda items, or we've had...
Two minutes apiece?
Yeah.
Let's get all the cards up, yeah. Any more out there? Now would be the time. So it looks like we may be up to...
I have 34.
Okay. Got a couple more?
Thank you.
Council, are we comfortable with two minutes apiece?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. So those are all of the cards that we will be accepting on this item. So with that, clerk, would you please call the first five? Please listen for your name.
And I do have, I can post the PowerPoint in just a moment. First speaker is Craig Osborne. Mr. Osborne said he might not be on time. Wayne Harmer, Terry Baker, Jane Daly, and Larry Stafford.
Okay. I don't see Mr. Osborne here, so wing. And if you're the next speaker, please come up and stand behind the current speaker.
Mr. Mayor, how much time did you want?
Two minutes apiece, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. I had this all written out on cards, and I was going to say, but I decided to throw them out and to speak from my heart. Most of you know me. I'm a 13-plus-year volunteer for the city of Rancho Cordova. I mostly do supervisory work. That doesn't qualify me to sit in that chair over there. What you need in that chair is a professional volunteer, and then on two hands, you need someone who not only knows how the system works, electronics, electrics, plumbing, welding, things I can't even really think of now. You have to be able to be an engineer. You have to have all those things to be a volunteer, to be a professional volunteer. You have to have those items. And I only know one person that has that that's in this room, and that's Lee Frichette. Now, on the other hand, even if you have all those, and if you remember right, Mr. Lee Frichette saved one of our Fourth of Julys by coming in to do electronic works and saved the entire performance because of his knowledge. You have to be there. He's there at every room. Now, if you fulfill that part, that's not enough to fill the chair. You need something else. You need to know how to run the chair before you sit in it. You got to get up and you got to go running with the chair. You can't learn stuff. It's not a learn-on-the-job. You got to know the aspects and the funding, and where the money comes from, where it goes. Whose job is it? All the people who do the jobs, getting to know how to do their jobs. Are they allowed to do that job? All this stuff you need to know before you get in the chair. You can't just take anybody. Even with my 13-plus years of volunteering, I'm nowhere even close to being in the chair. But I have a mentor. His name is Lee Frichette. He can take the chair, and can take it, and take off running, and he could support our and my city, Rancho Cordova. Thank you very much.
My name is Terry Baker. My family moved here in 1962. I was raised here. I graduated from Cordova High School and went to university at CSU and transferred to Abilene Christian. I did foreign missions, came back, and for three years preached at the Cordova Church of Christ. I then moved to Rhode Island, worked with a church there, and then in Texas later. Moved back five years ago to take care of my parents, who have always been here, who are in their elderly years and needed in-home health care. I teach at Eldar Academy with troubled high school students at risk, and after a day of only being punched twice, I came to speak a word in support of Conrad Mayer because I dearly love this community. And I'm, for years, was saddened by the things that I felt were happening here and love what I'm seeing with everything being turned around. I esteem him highly. You talk about somebody with skin in the game, Conrad. I've actually been out volunteering with him, handing out leaflets when he was running before, and I have nothing but high esteem for a man with tireless passion and dedication for the community, a positive force for promoting Rancho Cordova. I trust him highly. I know his moral standards and his ethics. I support his leadership style, and he's already demonstrated that, I think, to the community for many, many decades. He has invested so much time and energy already, has the knowledge and the history of this community, has a proven love for the community, and I would love to see him be given this opportunity to shine. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jane Daly. I don't live in this community, but I work here, which is almost the same as living here. I would like to express my support for Lee Frichette for the vacant City Council seat. I think that Lee exhibits the qualities that we have come to expect in our City Council members. He's a graduate of the Leadership Program through the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce. He's a board member of the Cordova Community Council. He's a volunteer for the California Capitol Air Show. He was a liaison with the Cordova Recreation and Park District on the American River Parkway Update Team, and he has experience in a corporate work culture as well as a family-owned business. This experience is crucial for a City Council member. Lee knows the importance of meeting payroll, balancing a budget, and keeping costs under control. This, coupled with his countless hours of volunteer time, make him an excellent candidate for the seat vacated by my friend, Dan Schoigland. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Larry Stafford, President of the Court of the Community Council, and I'm here to support my colleague, Lee Frichette, and board member. Lee, I think he underestimated when he said he spent thousands of hours in volunteer. He has proven his dedication to this community time and time again. One example, the community wanted a skating rink. The council thought, well, that'd be a pretty good idea. Found a place to put it, but there was no place to plug it in. Lee Frichette is the reason you were able to get that skating rink. He was out there till past midnight, hour after hour in the middle of winter, making sure there was electricity for that thing. That's just one example. He's rescued many of our events over the years and done a fantastic job. He is our go-to guy in every way. We couldn't have done it without him many times. So I want to endorse him, not just for his analytical mind and his processes and his great engineering skills, but Lee and I have spent a lot of time together, and we don't hang out and drink beer. Every moment that I've spent with Lee Frichette has been in service to the community of Rancho Cordova. But we've had a lot of time to talk about things, and I've found that over the years and over the hours, we've solved almost all the world's problems, and I think it's time to let Lee put those into act because he has got some great ideas. And listening to your candidates tonight, which I appreciate every one of them, but I heard one person with a clear vision for the future of Rancho Cordova, and that's Lee Frichette. I invite you and encourage you to let this guy put his processes and his people towards projects to get things done because your community, more than anything else, your citizenry, more than anything else, wants to get things done. So I encourage you, put Lee Frichette in that position, and in the words of the great prophet Larry the Cable Guy, "Let's get her done." God bless you. God bless the great city of Rancho
Is Jeremy McKeon here?
McKeon?
McKeon, excuse me.
It's okay. It doesn't look like it. I just came to talk for Conrad Mayer. I've been here 40 years, born and raised here. My kids, my wife, that's all they know as well. I've known Conrad over 20. I seriously believe that somebody should be here representing the city that has roots here, that has been here for a long time, knows it in and out. And with my background, I graduated from Cordova as well, went to Mills. I'm a correctional officer. So I know a lot has to do with the youth. That's where it starts. Conrad is all about the youth. I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't know him. If they don't, then they haven't been around that long. He's involved in everything. He's there every... Everybody's beck and call if they need him. He's the most unselfish guy I've ever met in my life. He'll give you the shirt off his back, give you a place to live. I mean, he'll do anything for you. He's served this community as long as I've known him. Mills, Mitchell, Cordova. He... I couldn't be anybody else. He's the face of Cordova. He's what Cordova represents. The neighborly, look out for your neighbors, passionate about where you grew up, and passionate about the future of it. It blows my mind. He's already a council member. I don't care what resumes say, what you've done or whatever, where you went to school. It's your heart, your passion. That's what he's about. You're blessed to be known, and you're blessed if he's a part of your life and part of the city. So I hope you guys consider him and take him as part of your council. Thank you.
The next speaker is Kenny Mendoza, then Chad and McKeon, and following Chad, McKeon is Diane Rogers.
Hi, I'm Kenny Mendoza. Conrad, you're going to be sitting next to David.
Conrad, you're going to be sitting next to David. Sorry, his joke. Anyway, I agree with David, because we're blessed. We've got so many good people. I know a few of them personally. I've sat in the Fourth of July committees when I first met Linda and David, and Conrad drug me there. And, you know, because that's what, one of the things you said, David, was leadership, and we all know Conrad's a leader. And I'm here to represent Conrad, if you didn't know. So he, he got me the first time I met him. Our sons went to school together, and I was kind of complaining about some of the things at Mills Middle School, and he said, "Why don't you not complain and come to the PTA meeting?" And Conrad had took, him and Melody, had took over the PTA meeting, because nobody was showing up. And then when I got there, I had realized they volunteered me to be vice president of the PTA, and they made a quick vote, and before I could run out, they, they got me. And I, I've just been caught ever since. Conrad is just one of the most wonderful people I've ever met in my life. He drug me to the Fourth of July committees. I think that was the second or third year. He, I got involved with him and Melody when they did their, the Cordova Cancer Walk. I mean, that is something huge that they brought to this community that stands out, and they put it on their shoulders and they took it. And I remember going to the city council meetings where you guys helped out a lot. So that's leadership, mentorship. He works with all the kids at the high school. I mean, that high school, when my son went there, there were a lot of lost souls. And you go there now, and, you know, they all talk about Conrad, how much they respect him. A lot of people don't care about our kids. Conrad, he does these things out of the goodness of his heart. Volunteering.
Mr. Mendoza, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment, please?
I love you, Conrad.
Next speaker is Chad McKeown. Following Mr. McKeown is Diane Rogers.
There's a button on the dais to actually lower that, if you'd like.
My name's Chad McKeown. I live on Ridge Trail Circle. I've lived here for over 50 years. My son spoke a few minutes ago. Him along with my other three children all graduated from Cordova, like my wife and I. My grandson graduated from Cordova. We've been here forever. And again, here for Conrad. Excuse me. Conrad served this council on a non-paying position for years. Everyone in the council knows Conrad. They know you can go to him, what, all the things that he's done. Thank you. Along with Conrad, you get Melody. It's not just one person that's going to be taking that job. As a person before, you mentioned the things that she's involved with, that they both served this city in non-paying positions for years. Fourth of July, he's out there 24 hours a day from start to finish, putting up the high school lights. He was one of those involved in getting the lights up at the football stadium. He's got a commitment for this community. He's got a vision for where he wants this city to go. I'm not going to tie up a lot of time just repeating what's already been said, but Conrad is the heart and soul of what we want for this council. I think we need to put about 15, at least, people that spoke tonight on it. Spread more, have 50 members up here from the sounds of it. But Conrad needs to be leading the charge. Thank you.
My next speaker is Diane Rogers.
And again, for the speaker immediately following the speaker, please come up to the dais right behind them.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I am Diane Rogers and have the privilege of serving as the president and CEO of the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce. I'm honored to stand before you and offer the chamber's uncompromising statement of support for the appointment of Mr. Garrett Gatewood. I'm joined today here by quite a number of chamber members, ambassadors, and business people in our community. Along with Garrett's family, I might add, his boys are over there in the corner. As an active member of the chamber since 2012, Mr. Gatewood immediately stepped up and served as a volunteer, an ambassador, and eventually a member of our board of directors. In 2014, his company received one of our Best in Business awards. Garrett's support for the chamber has resulted in dozens of new memberships and the elevation of many of our programs, particularly with respect to our technology and the opportunity we have with our new website. As a minority business owner, Garrett has dedicated himself to the establishment of a successful business, but also to what is in the best long-term interest of our city. It would serve this council and our community well to have someone who owns a business in Rancho Cordova, provides employment for over a dozen staff, many of them who are Rancho Cordova residents, and is directly subject to the business-related ordinances and codes and policies that this council would enact. Garrett is a true activist for our city. He is innovative, forward-thinking, and deeply passionate about Rancho Cordova. We're confident he would be an extraordinary asset, and we urge you to appoint him to this vacancy. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, David Mathis, owner of American River Brewing Company. I am not a resident of Rancho Cordova as of yet, but I have owned and still own American River Brewing Company. Very, very proud of that. I'm here to speak on behalf of Garrett Gatewood. I just recently got a chance to sit on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce with Garrett. I'm not going to speak about his attributes of his knowledge and understanding of government, but I will speak of his passion. Sitting on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce with Garrett, I recognize that he has passion for this city. It's very rare that you find the kind of drive and focus of what a person can bring to a city. I don't have much more to say about Garrett, other than he's got a great sense of humor. He has a wonderful far-seeing ability to see what's going to be coming down the pipe at us, and I think he would be a fantastic compliment to your city council. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Mary Sebastian, and I have lived in Rancho Cordova for 53 years, and I grew up with Conrad Mayer. And I have worked alongside him volunteering for many things, more than I can say in two minutes. But Conrad has put in his time to this community. He's given his life volunteering. His footprint is in every school. He's been on Measure B, Measure N. He has the heart and drive to make Rancho Cordova even more successful. He's been on every PTA, every school committee that I can name. He's been on every, many things that Rancho Cordova, the city, has put on. He has the leadership skills. He can get people involved. He has his pulse on this community, and I hope that you consider him for this position. He's put in his time. He's earned it. He's volunteered and given his life to this city, and I would like to see him give more of his service as a council member.
Dear council, my name's Matt Newton. I'm one of the pastors over at River City Christian across the freeway, and I want to talk about Garrett Gatewood as a great, great person to consider adding to the city council. And he has done so much. I want to focus on his service. We've heard about his passion. His humor, actually, is ridiculously funny, but his commitment to serving is great. We, as a church, serve the city in so many different ways, because we love the city, we love the people in the city. And Garrett is a great representative of what it takes to serve other people and to represent others in an incredible way. He has served in the community, in our church community, in many ways, in different outreach events that we have, such as the Christmas mall, which brings in over 900 people from the community, in another area called the Winter Sanctuary, as well as with the Axe Day, in where we help different residential areas. The point being is that he's very involved in reaching out to the community, let alone, as has already been stated, he is involved in many facets, from the Chamber of Commerce to coaching, being in the lives of parents and of members here. So we really do hope that you consider him as a great candidate. Thank you.
Next speaker is Raoul Barba.
Is that probably Rod Barba?
No.
Orba?
No. Raoul, B-A-R-B-A. Christina Gary.
Is there a Christina Gary?
I'll come back to those.
And again, for the next speaker on the list, please come and stand behind the current speaker. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Denise Brant, and I am the chair for the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce. I have been involved with the Chamber of Commerce for the last five years. I work for National University, and I've had a chance, over the last five-plus years, to work with Garrett in many different ways: volunteering, on the ambassador team, and now on the board of directors. I don't know anybody who is a more well-rounded candidate for this position. His heart is here in Rancho Cordova. His family's here in Rancho Cordova. His church is in Rancho Cordova, and his business is in Rancho Cordova. And I just see him as helping take the city to the next great many places that it's going to go, and I think he is a huge value and asset and will bring a very fresh, important voice to the council. And I just hope that you seriously consider him as a candidate, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ken Henderson, and following Mr. Henderson is Christina Gary.
Hello, Mayor. Council, it's so good to be here. When I think of the city of Rancho Cordova, I think of A Fresh Take. I remember, and I'll never forget it, because we worked on a campaign for A Fresh Take. We did this really big, really big presentation, and the whole time, the whole time, my former business partner and friend Garrett Gatewood was telling me how much Rancho Cordova was positioned to be the greatest city in the region. He got me excited, and I was like, man, come on, it's Rancho Cordova. Everybody knows about Rancho. He was like, man, I'm telling you. And through his passion and just his, just love of the city, I have come to love this city. I've gotten more involved in this city. A Fresh Take, yes, there may be people that know a lot about government and have been there, but A Fresh Take, someone who I know as a former business partner of his, loves this city, is concerned about what's going on in this city, and will be a great asset to help bring the city into the future. You guys have done such a great job, and adding Garrett Gatewood to this, to this, to this board would be amazing and help bring things to the next level. So in your consideration and everything, I just want to say, "Elect Garrett Gatewood! Appoint." Thank you.
Next speaker is Christina Gary. Following Ms. Gary is W. Sterling Rousen Thomas.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and the members of the city council. My name's Christina Gary, and I'm a resident that lives in Sun River, over off of Columbus. I'm a single mother of two young boys, and I have lived in Rancho. I went to Peter J. and Mills and Cordova High. I'm not here to represent any specific group, but rather speak on the character of Garrett Gatewood, and I urge you to appoint him in the addition to serve on the city council. He has coached both of my children thoughtfully and kind. He mentors all of the children of the team in their own strengths and always encourages them to have fun and try hard. He makes a point of leading by example, which allows the boys to look to him as a role model. He also is very passionate about getting the sports for the young, upcoming generations. And we both also attend River City Christian and are members of the same Bible study. His luminous character always brightens up any evening. He's volunteered with numerous community outreaches, whether it be doing the neighborhood cleanups or feeding the less fortunate. Our families have been friends over two years now, and he has really been, selflessly helps me so much, whether it be watching my children so I can visit my dad in the hospital after his heart surgery, or picking up my children, because being a single mom of two and having games on separate sides of the city isn't very, it doesn't work. The bottom line is, you get what you see with Garrett. Not only is he kind and decent, but he's engaged in his commitments. He's a man who believes and brings out the very best in those around him, and our city would be a better place if Garrett Gatewood were appointed to serve on the council.
Council members, Mr. Mayor, I'm Willis Sterling Rousen Thomas, here to speak on behalf of Garrett Gatewood. Garrett is ethical beyond reproach. Done business with him for a number of years. He believes very deeply in both Rancho Cordova and just being a solid businessman. I believe he'd be a solid addition and good person to have on the board. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, council. My name's James Salanoa. So I'm a sales manager for DHL Express and here to express my support of Garrett Gatewood. So, you know, I can say, you know, I've known Garrett for the best, you know, better part of four years now. We've met through church and been able to go through there, and really a few things that stick out to me are, you know, if I lead it off, it's commitment. It's commitment to youth. I have, I'm a single father of three children, and he's always been there to support me, and we've been able to see our kids grow at that portion of our lives, as far as, you know, whether it be coaching or, you know, recreational ball or going, you know, he's always been there. So for me, it's that commitment to the community, but also the employees that he has at his business. It really, it creates an atmosphere. It creates something, you know, he's dedicated to his employees, to his staff, and the people that he represents. You can see that when you go to his business. You can see that by how he treats them, how he treats us, you know, as, you know, even if you were to just go in to visit him, that type of commitment, that type of passion, if you say, is, it exudes from him. That's something that I look for when I'm looking for any type of business partner. It's someone that I look for as a leader, and that's something I can get behind and believe in. So if I look at it, you know, the time he spends in the community through church, it's something that we do together. I value that. The time he spends with the, you know, being a great boss, I can get behind that as well. So, you know, like I said at the beginning, I would really, I'd stand behind Garrett Gatewood in anything that, you know, you do, and I would encourage you to appoint him to the open member or the council seat. So thank you for your time.
Good evening, members of the council, audience, citizens. My name is Lupe Treviso Hernandez. I've lived in Rancho Cordova 42 years. No, I wasn't born and raised here. I was born and raised in Roseville. Having been involved in community service most of my life, as a child, as a young teen, that's where I learned, and I think this is what you're going to get when you look at applicants. The applicant that we're here, I'm here, to support and to speak in reference to is Conrad Mayer. My husband and I, Pedro, have lived in various areas of Rancho Cordova, so we know what it is to be in the hood and in the trenches. Conrad has that same mentality. He doesn't forget, and he hasn't forgotten where he comes from. Conrad has shown leadership, passion, drive, dedication, commitment. His inclusiveness in various individuals, families, when I talk about inclusiveness, I'm talking about individuals that you and I may not feel comfortable with. When we hear people of color, we think of one thing, but there's a secret I know about Conrad, and I'm going to divulge it right here. He's colorblind. He's truly colorblind, because he doesn't see what most of us sees, and he has this passion that includes everybody. He's a strong representative of all citizens, youth, families. He works at the- He works at the grassroots level. My recent interaction with him is through the interact at Cordova High School with my granddaughter.
Ms. Hernandez, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment, please?
I feel that Conrad's commitment, his drive, his energy, and his passion is beyond what qualifies him. Thank you.
The next speaker is Joyce Higdon. Following Ms. Higdon is someone who did not put their name, but listed Glen Fair Drive as their address.
I would like to begin by offering my condolences for the loss of your colleague and friend, Dan Skogland. I was happy to see so many of our residents eager to step up and take over this important role. While reviewing the applicants, I was glad to see that some of them saw how important parks are to the future of our city. I would like to declare my support for two of those candidates. I can support two because I don't have to make the final decision. The first candidate is Conrad Mayer. Conrad has been a resident of Rancho Cordova for over 50 years. I don't think anyone can dispute that no one loves Rancho Cordova as much as Conrad. And you just need to read the long list of programs and events he has participated in to understand his dedication to making Rancho Cordova a great city. Most, if not all, of you have worked directly with Conrad on one or more projects, so I will let your interactions with him determine if he is the best candidate for the job. I think his accomplishments speak for themselves. The second candidate I would like to place my support behind is Lee Frichette, who brings to the table experience and training we need to help elevate the importance of excellent swim and recreation facilities. Lee has been a longtime advocate for change at CRPD. His professional training and experience in development, background in facility management and maintenance, and aquatics operations are all important tools needed if we're going to break the impasse between the city and CRPD. From the Livestream Railroad to the Fourth of July activities, Lee has demonstrated leadership and a deep commitment to Rancho Cordova culture worth protecting. Great swimming facilities are a part of that picture. Lee's devotion and knowledge base regarding Haggen Park reassures me that those of us north of Folsom Boulevard will not be forgotten as the city moves forward. Godspeed as you move through this process.
Our next speaker is a resident at 2452 Glen Fair Drive.
Sound familiar to anybody?
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
Eric Woods would be next.
He left?
Following Mr. Woods is Ryan Bosic. Ryan Bosic.
Next would be Tony Cincotta.
Mayor Terry, council members, Tony Cincotta. I serve on the Rancho Cordova Chamber Board of Directors with Garrett Gatewood and would like to voice my support for him. I'm a garbage man, so I'm gonna talk about how much garbage we picked up during a series of community cleanups. He actually helped us coordinate and got volunteers and everything out there for. We picked up 59 tons of garbage off of, out of folks' yards who might have trouble getting rid of it. And remember, at one point, we had all of our kids in the back of my car, which might not be legal, but we were following a garbage truck around and, you know, loading stuff in the back and really, you know, helping out the community. He's, you know, his passion, I admire his passion for Rancho Cordova. And, you know, you won't find anybody, I don't think, more passionate. But to your point, David, you've got a tough situation here, and I don't envy you. You've got like an all-star team to pick from, so whoever you appoint, we really look forward to working with them. So thank you very much for hearing me out. Thanks.
Next speaker is Nick Sikich.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Nick Sikich. I'm not a current resident of Rancho Cordova, but I've been involved in the community over the years. Back five years ago, I graduated Leadership Rancho Cordova Class VI with Lee Frichette. And I'll just keep it short and sweet, you know. Getting to know Lee over the years, I'm not telling you guys and gals anything that you don't already know. He loves this city and has worked countless tireless hours for this city and the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Scott Alexander. Following Mr. Alexander is Karen Teague.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak before the council this evening. I'm Scott Alexander. I currently serve as the Vice Chair for the Rancho Cordova Chamber Board of Directors. I've had the absolute pleasure to work with Garrett for several years and most recently on the board. Couple things have hit me this evening, listening to comments this evening. And really, the word that I want to focus on is passion. And I think that describes Garrett down to his core. He's passionate about this community. He's passionate about the people in the community and passionate about watching the city be the absolute best it can be. I have, I'm an attorney in my day job. Been an attorney for almost 20 years as a litigation counsel in Sacramento. And I have the opportunity many times to advise and work with many different public entities, city councils, boards. And I think that Garrett would be an absolute benefit for this council, to the extent he brings exuberance, he brings infectious passion to everything that he does. And I think he'll bring a very fresh voice that's gonna be poised to take the city where it needs to go in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Teague.
Council, I am longtime Cordova resident Karen Teague, and I speak in support of Lee Frichette for City Council. I believe a member of City Council needs to be qualified. Three areas come to mind. They need to know Cordova inside and out, and I believe that Lee has that. He's a standout in this area. He gets things done in Cordova. He's, including the graduate, also the Leadership Cordova. Longevity and Cordova volunteerism. Lee's devoted many hands-on hours, making Cordova's events known throughout the region. Over the past 15 years, I've worked side-by-side with Lee on several projects, including receiving the Rancho Cordova Fourth of July Outstanding Volunteer Award recognition. Lee helps with that. He makes it look easy. Also, he's proven he's, I want integrity and reliability in my City Council members. And Lee's proven his worth and trustability in Cordova, also over the years upholding the highest security and money management clearance as the backbone of Cordova events, again, with the Fourth of July events and the air shows, which I've also volunteered side-by-side with Lee in. I stand with Wayne Harmer and Jane Daly and Larry Stafford, and I urge filling the vacant spot with Lee Frichette. That's my vote. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Terry and City Council. My name is Robert Abelon, and here on behalf of Region Technology. We represent tech companies in and around the Sacramento-Rancho Cordova area and here in full support of one of our board members, Garrett Gatewood. And I think, just like many of you council members, he wears a lot of hats in the community. One with his dedication to youth as a coach for children. One also who has started his own company. And beyond just starting a business and locating it here in Rancho Cordova, has gone above and beyond in also wanting to help create a better business climate by getting involved with multiple organizations, such as Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce and our organization, Region Technology. And he's quickly, what I've noticed when I see him in meetings, is just two things. His natural leadership ability, and two, when he has people in front of him or projects in front of him, his ability to be able to still questions and be able to get the most information and to help guide decisions, whether it's in board meetings from our organization or our annual retreat. He's quickly made a name for, in our organization and in our region. And I think he'll be a great asset to Rancho Cordova City Council and urge you to join me in support for Garrett Gatewood, to join you at the dais. So thank you.
Thank you.
I want to, first of all, I don't live in Rancho Cordova, but I am a-
Could you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Paula Schroder. I don't live in Rancho Cordova, but I am a member of the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce and an ambassador. So in the past three years, I've gotten to know Garrett Gatewood and would highly recommend him for a council member. I think he brings a lot of passion. I would concur with his sense of humor. And he, because he has a good business sense, I think he would be a good asset to be a member, council member, as well as, because he would be a good liaison between the government and the business and the community and help grow Rancho Cordova in that area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Hope Merritt.
Hi, my name is Hope Merritt III. I'm a director at Intel Corporation. And just like the man who spoke a bit earlier about, everybody says you should go to Folsom, Milledorel, Hills. I'm actually a proud Rancho Cordova resident. I haven't moved next to my job. I drive there every day. And so I just really want to say, I am here to support Garrett Gatewood. And a lot of people have talked about his business and his abilities. I want to talk a little bit about the man, Garrett Gatewood. The first thing I want to say about him is that he has a desire and a passion for his faith in the Lord. He's a member of River City Christian. But not only that, the way I got to know him is that we were in the same growth group. This is where a few families get together weekly. So it's not like I saw him just a little bit. I got to see him for two to three hours weekly, and saw how he behaved and cared about his family. And so while he's passionate about his faith, I'd also want to say, talk a little bit about the man. He is passionate about his family also. And I hear him talk about his children and talk about his wife. And, you know, even though his, I don't know if you've ever seen his boys, they're not that small anymore. But when we go pick them up at church, he goes, "I'm going to get my babies." Just the way he talks about his children, the way, as a man who still talks about, you know, kids seven, eight, nine years old as the babies, that shows his manhood and his desire as a father. Right? And then the final thing I want to say is about his passion and desire for business. You know, he's been through many shifts in his business, and he's dealt with not just the success he's had, but how he's responded to different economic times. And we've talked about this, you know, my 20 years at Intel, we've had a lot of discussion about business and different things like that. And so as I close, I want you to know that, you know, I support him as a man, right? I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry, make sure everything's clear. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let you know, I support him as a man, you know, as I talk about his faith. I talk about his family, and I talk about his work as he runs his company. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're not gonna have candidates speak again during public comment, so I do see other names on here. So go on to the next.
Thank you. My next speaker will be Anell Kana Crindri.
And I apologize to the last speaker. The city clerk and the mayor and I, I think we're all taken somewhat aback by seeing Mr. Mayor on the comment speakers. I think that, in general, on all of our items, for any item at all that's ever before council, all folks only get one opportunity to speak, and I think, if you don't mind-
I was going to speak on behalf of the Vanessa Martinez family and friends who are in Girilfune now, and I didn't think it was, I thought that she deserved someone to speak on her behalf and her accomplishments and her future as well in Rancho Cordova.
And again, our comments have nothing to do with the comments you were intending to make about any speaker or anyone else, but we generally only allow common, public comment ones.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, and my fellow citizens. It looks really good, because when our voter turnout is going very low, when you look at the midterm elections, it's 30% voter turnout, and now today we see 24 applicants. I think all of a sudden, all our citizens are remembering their civic duty and applied for the council position. I really congratulate everybody who applied for this position. But I think now City Council has a challenging situation to pick the best of the candidates. I see right now the business as well as the community. We need somebody bring both qualities together onto this council. So I request council to make a due diligence on the applicants and try to find out the right candidate who can bring both skill sets to the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Wallace Morgan.
Mr. Mayor, council members, it's a pleasure to speak to you this evening. Our City Council, you folks have done a great job about controlling our finances. We have surpluses and balanced budgets. Wow, that's great. As you consider filling the seat for the passing of Dan Skogland, I hope you choose somebody with the same motivation as Dan's. I want physical conservatism. Local government should be put before the public's safety and fiscal responsibility. So we all know those are top priorities. We are happy to see our friend, Lee Frichette, is applying for this job because we share some of his responsibilities and ideas. First of all, he has been around the county with us at rallies, at parades, and there are activities where we were actually slinging paint and working with wire. My wife and I watched Lee in action for years and know that he cares about the things that he does, like safe and parks, good parks. He's a remarkable volunteer, and we were volunteers on the Fourth of July in the past and observed him carefully and shared labor with him. So we're always delighted to see when someone of his caliber, who recognizes the neighborhoods, what's going on, cares about the people, loves us, and he becomes an invaluable asset. He's a friend, so please consider his name as you work upon this position. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rod Borba.
I thought I saw Rod out in the-
I'll put him on the box.
And again, if we could have the next speaker on the list, so that would be Delair Doyle. Come stand behind the current speaker.
Thank you, City Council. I was outside, sitting down out there. I want to compliment the City Council on this process. It seems to be an extensive, and you should be proud of the, as I read the resumes of all 24 candidates. Very proud to say that you've got some qualified people. Having known a few of them myself, not all of them. So thank you for having such a transparent process here. I think that, as a citizen, what we want to see is a person that's gonna be able to tackle the issues that you know that are in front of us in terms of the building, traffic, education. These are all strong indicators of a good city. As you know, that I support youth activities, and that is a big portion of every growing city. And so as you look for candidates, I'm looking for those kind of qualities that you can derive and use in the future. I had one person that called me for endorsement. And I'm not one to endorse candidates. I'm not a very political person. But I firmly believe that you've got a few candidates, Conrad being a great person. But Lee called me, Lee Frichette called me, and we had an extensive conversation for about an hour. Having known Lee to be highly intelligent in conversations we've had, he's a grand supporter of the community. I firmly believe in that, having lived here since '88. I find Lee to be of the intelligence. Not that I want to degregate anybody, and I told Lee that, I said, I don't want to really go forward and support something, somebody-
Mr. Borba, your time has expired. Will you make your final comment, please?
But, so I firmly believe in a lot of the people on that list that I do know. But I know personally, Lee can tackle the challenges in front of you, so that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Delair Doyle, and I'm a proud third-generation member of this great community called Rancho Cordova. My family graduated from Cordova Villa, Mills, and Cordova High. When I think of a City Council member, I think of someone who has a personal investment in the community's best interest. I think of someone that leaves from the front and not the back. I think of someone with integrity, compassion for our elders, and patience when it comes to our youth. I think of someone who is not scared to roll up their sleeves in order to get the job done. When I think of a City Council member, I think of someone who has a relationship with our teachers, local businessmen, and the cops that patrol our streets to keep our community safe. When I think of a City Council member, I think of someone who has the support of their friends, their family, and the city of Rancho Cordova. When I think of a City Council member, I think of Conrad Mayer. We all will sleep better at night knowing Conrad- We all will sleep better at night knowing Conrad Mayer is a City Council member. Conrad Mayer represents not just one of us, Conrad Mayer represents all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Ladd, and I'm here in my capacity as one of the founding fathers of the city of Rancho Cordova. I'm not going to comment on the merits of any of the candidates because that's the statesman-like thing to do. I would like to comment on how wonderful it is to have 24 candidates from such a broad spectrum of backgrounds and so many highly qualified people. And I want to share one thing from about 20 years ago. The late Dave Roberts and I had this mantra when we were working on cityhood, when it was sort of sputtering and there were a lot of barriers ahead. We said, if we build it, they will come. That's an old line out of Field of Dreams, the movie Field of Dreams. And so Dave, up in heaven, they're here.
Thank you, Larry.
Next speaker is Craig Osborne.
Thank you, Mayor and council members for allowing me to speak out of order. As many of you know, I had a family commitment that didn't allow me to be here earlier. I've been a resident of Rancho Cordova since before there was a city of Rancho Cordova. I've been involved for many years in many organizations. Won't try to list them right now. We are blessed, as several other speakers have mentioned, blessed to have such a long list of candidates, quite a number of whom could do this job quite adequately. In fact, three or four or five seem to me to make excellent candidates and ones that I would like to watch for the future. Right now, we don't have the opportunity to select three or four or five. We have the opportunity to select one. So I'm going to limit myself to two recommendations. My criteria come down to demonstrated leadership, longstanding dedication to our community, and a similar worldview to Dan Skogland's. You know, we're not just selecting someone who's going to do a good job, but we're selecting someone to take a seat that was elected, to which Dan was elected. So those are the criteria that I held as I reviewed those applications. Like I said, there are several that could make great council people. I'd like to watch several of them as we go forward into the future. But the two that stood out the most to me are Lee Frichette, especially for his leadership, and Catherine Cooley. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a few speaker cards that didn't show. Raoul Barba, someone who living at 2452 Glen Fair, Eric Woods, Orion Bossage. And I don't see them.
I've had a bit of a change of heart. Conrad, if you'd like to take two minutes to talk about Vanessa, I think that'd be fine, if you'd like to.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we sought out for cityhood and after an incorporation, I believe it was said by our city manager, but I could be wrong, that we did not have the leadership for the next 30 years. And one that doesn't listen to authority thought he was wrong, or she, whoever the person was that said that. I had the pleasure of working with Vanessa, not only in high school, as a graduate, and at middle school. And I wanted to point that out because she is someone that is the purest, and she's born and raised here, just like a number of others. But her commitment to this community is just impeccable. She had a career set that changed because of her involvement in our community and her desire to be a part and serve. And I wanted to point that out because, again, to have someone say that we don't have the leaders and not know the people, I think is a travesty. And I want to say Vanessa, in her high school years, have done things that some of us as adults haven't done. She raised, I believe, $5,000 as a senior president of her interact club and dispersed $5,000 in $1,000 increments to water projects throughout the world. And to me, that shows some maturity, that shows some leadership. And if some of her peers weren't at in school right now, possibly getting ready to graduate or take a final, they would be here on her behalf, just like they were for her. And her future, I believe, is bright. It's the future. She is the future that I would like to see here in Rancho Cordova. And because her parents were not able to be in attendance, I thought it was only right that I speak on their behalf. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for all of your comments. I guess the question for the council is, do we want to take a short break before deliberation? I'm seeing one nodding head. Another one? Okay. Yep. So we'll take a 10-minute break, but that's a real 10 minutes. So more like be back in here about seven or eight minutes, maybe. Okay. So with that, we'll take a recess. You don't have to stop talking. You just got to stop talking if you're going to sit in here, please. Our hallway is in foyer is available for anybody that wants to continue conversations. Okay, council. So I think there's a couple of different ways we could try to do this, but I think we might start with a brief discussion from each of us. And then I might suggest that we pick each pick three candidates and see if we can whittle it down to a smaller group to ask additional questions of and see if we can get that to a manageable number of four, five, or six.
So why don't we just offer comments?
Sure.
And discussion, and then include in that who our top three picks would be.
Go ahead.
No.
David?
Stop with David.
So in our in our comments, we should also suggest our three.
Wow. Well, this is a really awful moment. I was joking with someone in the break. It's probably the toughest decision I've had to make because I have a number of friends on this list, a number of people who I highly, highly respect on this list. And for all the reasons I mentioned earlier about the importance of this job, the relevance of it to to our residents, I think in the mass media, you hear a lot about national office holders, Congress, President, you hear about the governor, you hear about the state legislature. But the reality is, the buck stops right here at this level in local government. This is these are the decisions that affect more people in more ways than any other level of government ever will. This is police, fire, schools, all in local government, transportation, economic development, parks and rec, all local government. So really, from my point of view, this is the most significant level of government service. And because of that, I think we have to have an exceptionally high sort of bar on on who we would appoint to this empty chair on my left. I know in in my activities in this community, I have backed people for office. I have helped people get elected. Not everyone I've backed has been elected. But I try to apply the same sort of standard. Who is really here for the community? Who is really here standing up for the community? Who has the best record in this community standing up for us? And so if I apply that leadership standard, who's been here, who's done that, and I apply that to this list of candidates, who, again, there's remarkable talent here. And we've got to pick one, but there are two dozen people here who could really contribute a lot to Rancho Cordova in a variety of ways. And I want, I really would love to have all of your commitment to do something outside of this. Some of you already are, many of you already are. Some of you aren't, and you need to find that in this community. We are so welcoming to people. We are so welcoming to each other. We're so collegial. Rancho Cordova is the perfect place to really engage and get something done if you're interested in actually moving the dial on something. So I encourage you to do that. If I apply that really harsh leadership test, right, who has identified a problem in the community, gathered a group of people to work on that problem, charted the course towards the solution of that problem, and actually followed through to get it there, the list of I have to apply some screen to this huge number, the list who passed that leadership test as I apply it gets pretty short, not super short, but short. Names that are still on it would be Lee Frichette, Conrad Mayer, Troy Karnarsky, Brian Danzel's here, but he has withdrawn, Matt Cummings, Garrett Gatewood, David Hune, Tara Cavallbach, and Vanessa Martinez. Not saying anything against the rest of you, I'm just having to apply some sort of a screen on my own. And those are the names I would I would narrow down to by that screen. Beyond that, now, we have to apply some sort of standard of who are we who are we looking for? What gaps could we fill? I think about the skills Dan had and what we might be missing because Dan isn't here. I think about the job we have in representing Rancho Cordova and the city and in other service in the region because we have to serve on a variety of boards. We have to do a lot of outreach. Who's got those sort of qualifications? I look at the record to see who's got the who's got the in-depth resume. Of my group of leaders right there in the leadership test, who would naturally come to the top of that group? And this is where it gets to be a really difficult decision. In the end, if I've got to pick three, and we're all committed to picking three in the next few minutes, I would pick Lee Frichette, Conrad Mayer. And the third one is really tough. There's one individual in the room who I encourage to apply. And so I think I will name him as my as my third, and that's Dave Hune.
Bob?
Well, my choice is a little bit harder than David's. I have 24. Now, by the time we got here tonight, we had 22. We've had a few that were not able to come, and I'm sorry they weren't. You know, one of the things that we've been fortunate in Rancho Cordova a long time is before it became a city, and especially since we became a city, we have had leaders. Something was said about the county was saying, oh, you'll never have the leader, that you don't have the leaders, that you would you will come apart in a very short time. Financially, you will be bankrupt in five years. I think, if I remember correctly, during the recession, the county had a budget that was in red and ours was in black, just kind of along that line. We've got a lot of fantastic people here. Former planning commissioner folks, people with the community council and with the Chamber of Commerce and with Rotary Club and with the Elks and with and with and with. It goes on so many different ways. And everybody's involved in so many, so many things. Trying to pick somebody tonight is like saying, let's see, which one of these citizens would do a good job? I think all of you would do a good job, including the ones who didn't put their name in. There's some really good people here who would be good council members. I was very, very glad to have everyone come up to the podium, and not one person said negative, 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 negative. That's not the way things are done here in Rancho Cordova. You may think someone else may have a better do a better job, but you're not talking about someone who comes up and says, this is really a bad person over here, so don't vote for them. And this is a bad person too, because we didn't have that. You'll see that other places, but you don't see that in Rancho Cordova. When we have a difficult decision here on the City Council, and the person that's, excuse me, chosen will also have a hard time. But we vote the way our hearts say to vote. And then you go on. You don't get hung up on something because that's the way this City Council works. We vote the way we think it should be done, and then you go on to the other, like I always say, 10,000 things we also need to do. So you don't get stuck on one thing. You waste time by doing that. Tonight, wow. I have cutting down, which is really hard to do, folks, cutting down anything. Cutting down the people. I've got four people. I've got Lee and Conrad and Garrett and Catherine Cooley. Right now, that's where I am. I'm kind of going around in circles, trying to close my eyes and say, let's see, is this the best one? That's I don't know yet. But I know all of them and all of you, including those that I didn't choose right then, as I said, would all be excellent council members. We're all working to the for the best of Rancho Cordova. And that's where it is. We're all working for Rancho Cordova. So that's where I am at the moment.
Linda?
Okay. Well, I have to repeat it again. I've spent the, what, the weekend, ever since, ever since the list was finalized, being absolutely thrilled that there were 24 people who applied. I just was absolutely tickled pink. And and equally overjoyed personally that eight of our applicants are women. I shouldn't have to say it, but when I first got elected to public office back in the late 70s, there were more women serving in government in California than there are today. And that's a dreadful statistic. That should not that we should not have to admit that. In the early 80s, states like Kansas and Iowa had women governors. And California is still dragging its feet about getting to that, getting to that pinnacle. So I'm absolutely thrilled that we have so many women who've applied. But like the like my colleagues, when you look at the quality of the people that are here, thank you for those of you who served in the military. Thank you for those of you who are serving in government service right now. David said it best, this is not an easy job, but being in the government period is not an easy job. And it's probably safe to say that being in government has not been an easy job since Watergate. And some of us are old enough to remember that. Things changed with Watergate. And and we're at an interesting evolution point right this minute. Thank you to those of you who were the teachers, the people who are trying to educate our children. Education is so important. Our children are so important here in Rancho Cordova. When we were all running for City Council and Mike and Kurt were chairing the incorporation committee, we invited just everybody into a room and asked them what were their top five priorities for Rancho Cordova. And sure enough, of the 48 or some odd different priorities that people came up with, the top five were for children. And I know that Mike remembers that. But this is a this is a difficult decision. There's no question about it. And I would continue to call for for those of you whom we have not met before but are bringing so much to the table tonight to try to stay involved. We do, we are starting on a discussion of of how we can encourage or mentor or create some sort of a bench of people who will ultimately run for City Council or run for the school board or the park district board or or the metro fire board, any of the ways in which people represent Rancho Cordova. So as I look at the at the at the list of people and have to make my own call on the tough decision, the first person I would nominate is Vanessa Martinez. I would admit the same way that David did, that I asked her to consider running, because I very much agree that Vanessa is the future of our city. It is so important that we involve. We involve people who are younger than most of us sitting up here. We, I'm not counting him. We really, we really, we really need that. It's we have a variety. Here at City Staff, there are people. We have a variety, here at City Staff, there are people of many ages and many backgrounds here. And so we have a wonderful group of people whose opinions we can call on, and whose perspectives are different based on where they have come from originally, or how old they are, and that's so important. But Vanessa is truly looking towards the future, and I appreciate that. The second person I would support for this is Lee Frichette, because Lee represents some of the foundation on which this city was based. And he has some stability in the community and participation in the community that is the hallmark of Rancho Cordoba. We all know that Rancho Cordoba runs on its volunteers, and he's incredibly representative of that. And then thirdly, my nominee would be Tara Kovalbuck. Tara has an amazingly varied background, which I am probably, should be ashamed to admit, I didn't realize. And she has also demonstrated her commitment to Rancho Cordoba, and I am very pleased to support those people, those three people at this point in time.
And I think I echo what you've heard from all of my colleagues, that, one, thank you, everyone, for applying. You did give it your all, and you made it a doozy as far as what we have to pick up here. But as I was thinking about this, I kind of look at the makeup of the council now, and where we have strengths, and where we could have improvement, or where we might not have expertise that is out there in this group of people. I don't think we're lacking for institutional memory or community history by the people that are represented here already on the council. And so when I look at this, I'm looking for who adds strength in areas that we don't have strength in, whether that's diversity, or background of business, in creating jobs. And so, again, and I think you've heard this from everybody else, is it's not, it's no disrespect for who is not on our list, but it's who, in my opinion, who I see as the people that best complement or reflect our community for where it's come from and where it's going. So in that light, for me, I would say Garrett Gatewood, Catherine Cooley, and Troy Kornarski. So if I'm looking at my notes, well, that's everybody that's been named, yeah. So would we want to ask questions now of this group, or would we want to whittle it down again to two, and see where we land after that? Council?
Well, I'm thinking, trying to go down to three or four out of the eight.
So that would be, we could do another cut of two, or we could each pick one? I wouldn't probably suggest at the moment to pick one, because I think it'd be helpful to get more feedback from the candidates.
It looks like Frichette has three, Mayer two. Not quite sure what to do with Bob's three and four.
Yeah, Bob, you did get to.
Gatewood, one and a half, Cooley, one and a half. Some measure like that. As the mathematician here.
Bob, if you had to go back on your list here and pick three, what would you do?
You know what, it's still hard.
It's not going to get any easier.
Right now, Lee and Garrett and Catherine Cooley.
Okay. So that would leave Lee on three, Garrett and Catherine with two. And if I'm doing that right, nobody else had more than that. Does that sound right?
You're right.
Okay. So if we wanted to get it down to three, we would have Lee, Garrett, and Catherine. Does that sound right?
Is three.
Well, no, that, Lee had three votes, or is on three of the council's list. Garrett is on two, Catherine is on two.
I see what you mean.
So if we were talking about getting down, I'm sorry? Conrad has one after Bob picked Lee, Garrett, and Catherine. Do I have that right, council?
That's the tabulation.
So then those would be.
I was about to ask her, city clerk, because she has better notes than I do.
Does that sound right to you?
Three, two, two.
You did what?
I just took names.
Okay. So I have, let me just repeat this then, off of my notes. David had Lee, Conrad, and Dave Hune. Bob had Lee, and now Garrett and Catherine. Linda had Vanessa, Lee, and Teresa, or Tara, excuse me. I had Garrett, Troy, and Catherine. So that would be two picking Catherine, two picking Garrett, three picking Lee. And again, this is not our finalists, this is to ask more information of these candidates. Okay?
Maybe. I don't know if we need further questions. I defer to my colleagues, but I feel like we've got a good feeling for who people are.
Is there anything that people would like to clarify? I have some questions for some of the candidates.
Why don't you do another list with those people?
Well, go ahead.
Why don't you do another list?
Lee, could I ask you a couple more? I had a question on your 700 form.
Yeah.
And I think you might have already clarified this with staff, but I thought it might be helpful for you to clarify it in public. We pay a considerable amount of money each year to the community council, and I see that there could be a conflict of interest there. And as somebody who has a spouse that also works for a nonprofit that is funded by the city council, what would be your plan to ensure that there, and again, this isn't just for the city, or community council, or you, but making sure that we don't have any concerns as far as conflicts of interest?
Well, in talking with the city attorney this afternoon, apparently, there doesn't seem to be any conflict of interest. I don't have a spouse that, I don't have a spouse, period, right now, so.
I was using my example, but your personal involvement with the community council.
Yeah. My personal involvement with the community council is probably not any different than David's personal involvement with the community council, sitting on that board. Clearly, with two of us on that board, one of us is going to have to leave, so we don't have a Brown Act problem. But in terms of the community council, I've been a, you know, great supporter of it for many years, but my responsibility and my duty, should I find myself sitting behind the dais, is to be a good shepherd for the city of Rancho Cordoba first, and put the city of Rancho Cordoba first, as I always have.
Okay. I guess my specific question is around what you listed as self-employed pyrotechnics.
Oh, okay. That's a great one, and I thank you for asking that, because a lot of people don't know that, you know, while I have been instrumental in bringing the pyrotechnic shows to Rancho in recent years, while I was manager for pyroengineering, I turned the Rancho show into a corporate show and took all the profit out of that. We actually did that at a loss. And nobody, while I was with pyroengineering, including myself, got paid anything to do that show. That's a volunteer show. Since then, I've left pyroengineering. I still do operate shows for many different companies around the area, nationwide, really, as just an independent contractor. And clearly, there would have to be, you know, we'd have to watch it, you know, what we do in terms of the contracting for the Rancho show, and make sure that, you know, I'm not involved in that. There may, you know, I may have to refuse to do work for, you know, the company that has the contract, or something like that. You know, that's, you know.
And you're comfortable with that?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So what's the will of the council? Any additional deliberation, discussion? Want to take a vote?
I could say some things about Lee, if that's helpful.
You think?
I think Lee is a rare visionary who can see things through to completion. I mean, often you get the vision thing, or you get the detail thing. Lee's an engineer that can kind of span those two. Most of probably what we have experienced is the latter, you know, dealing with the details. But I can tell you, and I'm about to give you a list of things where the vision thing has applied. So if you have enjoyed Rancho Cordoba's Christmas tree in the park, or the carnival in Hagan Park at the Fourth of July, or concerts in Village Green Park, or the fireworks at Hagan that have occurred without fires to the Parkway, and while a lot of other shows are being canceled, or if you've enjoyed movies in the park, or the upcoming meal station remodel, or the modernization of the live steamers, or the ice rink we had for a few years, you've got to thank Lee for those things. Because he had the vision, and in the end, he had the personal strength, knowledge, engineering skill to get it done. I think community service is kind of a way of life for Lee. You know, many of us, I think, suffer from that disease in this job, where we commit, we commit a lot. Our family pays a tax of some kind, because of how much time we spend in community, and Lee fits into that category. It's a way of life for him. He's got, I think, great skills for us as a council member. I mentioned he's an engineer and a problem solver. So we could send him to somewhere like, Dan represented us at Regional San. We could send Lee comfortably to Regional San and have him represent our issues, like fees on infill, at a very technical level, that would be hard for a lot of council members, but he is up to tackling that complexity. He's got a long view that way. He pushes the envelope, which is sort of a Rancho Cordoba mantra. I think we have done that in our management, and in our style, and the region. I think Lee fits that well. He's also been a business owner, and he managed a family's development process for a while, so he's got a set of development skills, development agreement skills, negotiation skills that would probably serve us well. He's been a parks and rec planner, and goodness knows, we've got a lot more parks and rec stuff on our plate than we ever anticipated, and probably more to come. So I view that as an asset. And he's led some organizations through really challenging times. I'll give you one example. Some of us may be aware of this, others may not. The live steamers, at one point, a long time ago, used a rock called serpentine to use as ballast around their rails. Well, it turns out, 30 years later, serpentine, if hit regularly and routinely, and it was used all over Eldorado County, in parks, and rec facilities, and schools.
And schools.
And schools.
And roads.
It can give off airborne asbestos. All right? Serpentine heated makes asbestos. So here we had it under the rails in Hagan Park. And basically, everyone, when that was discovered, said, that's the end of the live steamers. This is a huge, messy cleanup. Air Quality Management District is involved, you know, the American River Parkway, and the county is engaged, environmental health is engaged in this. Lee managed somehow to get the city, and the park district, and the American River Parkway, and the Air Quality Management District, and donors, both in terms of taking the rock out, replacing it, he somehow managed to pull together a process that no one thought was possible to fix. And we instead have an upgraded live steamers, instead of a failed, gone, absent live steamers. So that's an example of sort of taking a long vision and fixing something really complex and making it work. And then, what did Larry say earlier? Get her done? Lee's got, and I forgot, we're quoting Larry, the cable guy?
Larry, the cable guy.
All right.
Larry quoted Larry, the cable guy.
Larry quoted, that's what I'm confused about. Larry quoted Larry, the cable guy. Lee's been there, done that, and he's got her done. Whether it was the All-America City team that he was on and kind of managed, almost like from a staff perspective, whether it's been the community council board, Rotary, live steamers, airshow roles, there's a lot. And as a bonus, he's an Air Force guy, which matters in Rancho Cordoba. And as an additional bonus, he can blow things up, which, which, at least to the men in the room, that's kind of exciting, you know? But there's real opportunity, I think, with Lee. He's a proven leader, he's got the right experience, he's got needed skills. I think he's ready for this level.
Bob, any feedback?
Well, there's two others that I had on my list, and I still see some benefits with one, Garrett Gatewood, and I see a lot of benefit with Garrett, with his family, and with the kids. There's an awful lot of need, I think, to also look at what you can do with the kids. Lee can do many things with physical things, but I think Garrett, from what we've heard, what I've read, has done more with family, with kids like that. That's why I say it's very hard, because you see so many benefits for Lee, what he can do, and what Garrett can do. Catherine and her family here in Rancho, they've been here for a long time, doing a lot of things too. I think right now, I'm still with, I'm down to two, I think, Lee and Garrett.
So I'll talk about Garrett. Garrett mentioned that he's a Little League coach. I was his assistant coach, not really by choice. I got the text message when I said, weren't you going to be the coach? He goes, yeah, and I just signed you up to be the assistant coach. But, and a lot of the speakers talked about it, his passion for this kind of work, showing up, giving it 100% with other family issues and things that he was trying to deal with at the same time that any mere mortal in his position would not have continued to be at every Little League practice, still run his company, and take care of his family. And I'm not going to talk about what that crisis was, but there was a really tough thing going on in his life, and he still made sure to be at all those things, and to work just as hard as if you didn't have any clue, and most people don't. But this guy, I mean, I consider myself somebody with a lot of energy. There's a reason I say I don't drink caffeine, I already talk fast enough. That guy's got more energy than I do, and more passion for this, maybe not more passion for this community, but as much passion for this community as I do. And something that's always struck me, since being on this council and having even served on a school board, is we can't ignore the diversity of this community, and the fact that, right now, this council doesn't necessarily reflect that. I think in the comments that Linda made about females in elected office, it's something that we need to look at. And I think that's a unique thing that Garrett brings as well. And so, and I would also point out that, you know, as we look at who we have here, who's been here for 40 years, who was here before there was ever a city, who's been very involved with the community council, I think we reflect a lot of the things. And again, that's not to discount anything that Lee's done in this community, but I'm not sure that we're missing the things that Lee brings, in the same way that we benefit from Garrett being on this council. Because I don't know of anybody here that has, you know, 50 employ, you know, a large company that's operating in 32 states, that is doing IT, you know, our expertise and our interest around hacker labs, and Makerspace, and a lot of all those things that we've talked about, no one here is an expert on that. We've gone to conferences, we've read about it, we've met with people that, he's doing it. So when I look at that, that's a skill set we just don't have here, and that's a skill set I think we want. You know, we have, how many umpteen data centers in Rancho Cordoba? But none of us have ever worked fixing them, or addressing them, or understanding the kinds of needs that they have. You know, I've visited McKesson's data center, that's the one I've been in, and my mother-in-law works at, the HP one. Those are the two I'm familiar with. That's about as much as I know about them. But yet, that's one of the biggest industries in our business park. Why not have somebody that understands their needs better than anybody else probably in this city? in this, in this city? So again, it's not to say that, that Lee, or even Catherine, I think, I think Catherine brings, you know, a unique perspective as far as her working for a city, working in affordable housing and working with lower-income people. Her diverse family, I think, is also an asset that, and again, it addresses something that, again, I think we're lacking, which is that there's not as many elected officials that are female in this region. You know, there was, there was a great story this week about, you know, the lack of diversity at the city manager and, and mayor level. I will point out that Linda will be mayor next year, so we're actually going to look a little bit better by then, so.
And we, and we've looked pretty good at the city manager level in recent.
I agree. But that was.
Or the police chief level.
Right. But it's a, it's a unique story that I don't think we want to ignore. I think, I'm not saying that it's the most important thing, but when you add everything up, and if everything's equal, is that something that, that we also need to be considering? I think you should.
Well, unlike David, I did not share my list of the top six, and Garrett was definitely on that list. So I, I could actually be comfortable with Lee or Garrett. And I would welcome either one of them.
Okay.
They both, they do, they do both provide, I mean, we had so many people who are community volunteers. But I do appreciate the fact that Garrett brings some additional youth. And he brings, he brings the future in terms of where we ultimately need to go from a technology standpoint. We've made huge strides in, in social media and doing everything we possibly can with the talent we have to, to be sure that we are communicating with everybody in a way that, that they want to be communicated with. But having somebody who's interested in, or really working in the technology field could be an asset, and I would admit that, so.
Well, it appears that Lee has the, the highest rank in our first and second round. So I think we should probably test that. I'll move that we adopt Lee Frichette as next member of the Ranch Cordova City Council.
I'm not sure if that's necessarily the count that we have, though.
Ranked, ranked number one by me, ranked number one by Bob, and mentioned first round by Linda.
Well, I can tell you, I didn't rank my, when I made my, when I named mine, so, and Linda, I don't know if that's how you felt about that as well.
Well, I did. Sorry.
Okay. So we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey?
No.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
And Mayor Sander?
No.
What'd she call me?
David.
Oh, you meant Donald, it's okay.
Mayor Terry. Pardon me.
No.
So that motion fails.
Well, I'd make a motion to have Garrett, the other next council member.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
I'd like a comment.
Go ahead.
You know, I think one of the screens that, that we agreed on was service to the community. And Garrett's is relatively short-term. Lee's is relatively long. I understand there's unique aspects to both, but I'm challenged by one candidate who might have a harder sell and be a better salesperson, and the other candidate who actually gets more stuff done.
I guess my, my comment back to that, and I wouldn't, and again, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with what you said, but longevity in the community and, I guess, it's put it, wisdom isn't determined by how, by how long you've known something, it's what, it's what you know, right? And so Garrett's been in this community a little bit less amount of time, but for the time that he's been here, he's been just as dedicated as the other candidate, in my opinion.
I don't think you could make that conclusion.
Well, if you've lived here longer, then you can get more accomplished because you've, you've been here longer to do things.
I'll, I'll give you an example. There's been one, Garrett's organized one community-wide effort that, well, neighborhood-wide effort that I'm aware of. Lee probably has, I don't know, more than a dozen that you could claim at a, at a community level. That doesn't seem like an equitable comparison to me.
Well.
You were talking about developments here in the business park and the sort of employers we have. It's true, we've got a lot of IT, and Lee, in his development job, built a lot of those buildings, not these buildings, but elsewhere. His family development company was engaged in a lot of those sorts of efforts, and he's a very technical guy.
But is the value in the fact of building the building or what's going on in them today?
I think it's a mix, because if you're the developer, you have to be able to make a pencil at the end of the day. So I think they both have remarkable skills. I just think there's a clear edge for Lee, and I'm worried about the hard sell. And we saw, we saw evidence of that tonight.
On both, with both of the candidates, absolutely.
Only one candidate has a camera in the room videotaping this.
I don't see what, I.
It's a, it's a, it's a hard sell. It makes me uncomfortable.
Okay, so let's ask the question. I've personally been on the end of a, an appointment decision that ended up in a complete split. This was a three-three split. And weeks of discussion among the board members on this particular organization resulted in them choosing a third candidate who swore him down that he wasn't going to run after the term of the appointment ended, and he did end up running, and he served three terms wonderfully, honorably. But if we're really split two-two, and we don't know that for sure, but if we're really split two-two, is there a third person that is a candidate that we could all agree on?
Are we really split two-two?
It's a possibility.
We have a motion and a second on the table. We could take another vote.
We could.
Call the question.
Roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
No.
Vice Mayor Budge?
I'm going to vote yes.
And Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Gatewood. So we'll take a five-minute recess, and then we will come back to do, for the clerk to swear in the new council member.
Assuming that he wants to.
I want to talk process really quick. Okay, so I think it was the intention, at least of myself, to swear in and seat the candidate tonight upon discussion with council, considering Mr. Gatewood's 700, council has advised, or the city attorney has advised the candidate that some additional work should be done prior to the candidate voting on the budget. And so, in discussions with, with Mr. Gate, with Mr. Gatewood, he has agreed to wait until June 19th to be sworn in. So if that's comfortable with the rest of the council, we'll schedule that for the, our next meeting. But what I would ask is, as we move on to, any questions about that? Okay. And moving on to 15, hang on, let me get to where we left off. So moving on to 17, to 17.1, and again, the reason I was really interested in having whoever got this position to sit down with us tonight was so that they didn't get stuck with a two-year budget, that they didn't have the opportunity to give input, to ask questions, and to vote on. So if we're comfortable, we can ask some additional questions, get the presentation from staff tonight, but I would ask that, following that, that we would continue this item until the next meeting, where the new, the new city council member would have the opportunity to put their name and stamp of approval on what ultimately is the two-year plan for our organization.
You know, we'll still have only three council members, because David's not here next.
David's not going to be here.
Right.
So we would have four, yeah? Well, and David, that is true. I guess my feelings on it would be that throughout this whole process, you had a lot of input that obviously a new council member's not going to be able to have, but it still gives at least the opportunity for the new council member to meet with staff, ask questions about what this plan really is, and have the kind of access that we had to, to at least composing it. So again, I, I don't, I don't know if that's, I mean, we could, we can vote on it tonight. I'm, I'm just telling you what my opinion is, that as the, as the newest council member on here, until we seat somebody, I know what it feels like to come in and be handed a budget shortly after I got here and say, this is what we've been doing and what we're going to do. So, again, that was my thought process around having somebody sit here tonight. But Adam would like us to extend that period so that we make sure that, from an institutional standpoint and from Mr. Gatewood's standpoint, that there are, if there are conflicts, that they are, that they are properly recused or addressed prior to him taking that vote.
And just for the benefit of the public, what, what the council just did by an appointment is essentially, compresses, there's normally about a month gap between the time that someone is elected to office and the time that they actually take office after the certification of the election. And that's a period when, when the city manager, the city clerk, and the city attorney are all able to sit down and kind of go through their economic interests, help them understand all of the, these different aspects of service, and that potentially just gets compressed here. And, and the reality is, Mr. Gatewood has a relatively successful and relatively complex business, so this will just give us the opportunity to take a quick look at that and, and cross the Ts and dot the Is before he's sworn in at the next council meeting. And of course, you know, the, the budget that you're about to take action on, of all the things that the council annually takes action on, it's actually the thing that, that touches the most other things in different ways. It's the thing that potentially touches the most economic interests of anything that the council does, really, in the whole year.
Yeah.
Something that I'd like to bring up, since we're talking about passing the budget, and we have four members of the council tonight, and at the next council meeting, we're going to have four members again. I would rather have the budget tonight with David here, since all four of us have had the time to go over the budget, as we have, instead of waiting until the next council meeting and have one of the council members, as good as they are, still not having the time to go through the budget and understand it like David does.
I actually agree with Bob.
Okay. If I'm the only one, that's fine. We can do it tonight. David, I'm assuming that you are in agreement with that?
It's, it's, it's fine, yeah. It's sort of a, I think, a challenging thing to ask the newest member to tackle a bigger vote as the budget is. And if that, if the newest member did have alterations they wish to make next time, the time for pulling those off is really short.
Yep. That's true.
And of course, you know, we always touch on these programs downstream, adjustments, changes are possible. It's not like this is chiseled in stone, or we don't look at it for two years.
Okay.
There's, there'll be plenty of opportunities to, to address other priorities, I think.
I, I would also just point out that, as we have the staff presentation, that at some point, I will need to recuse myself and step out of the room in order for there to be a discussion about the airshow line item. And I think Adam can take you through that more, but you can take over the gavel at that point. So with that, we'll move on to the regular calendar items, and is it recommended that, so we have our operational budget, capital improvement budget, approving appropriations limit for fiscal year 1718, and adopt resolution approving full-time employee salary schedules. And our CFO will take us through, is this the first one you've presented up here?
For adoption, yes.
Adoption, huh?
Yes.
Cool.
But it's not the first time you've heard me talk about it, so. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the public, members of the city council, Kim Duran, Cara Georgio, City's Administrative Services Director. Here this evening to provide an overview of the 2017 to 19 operating budget and the fiscal year 2017 to 22 capital improvement program. I'm going to, this evening, go through at a fairly high level. On May, on May 23rd, the council did hold an in-depth budget study session to discuss the budget, where we got into quite a bit of detail. So the purpose this evening is to really just do a highlight of the budget. But at this, any point in time anybody has questions, happy to stop and answer them. So very quickly, just the budget timeline. As a reminder, we did start, kick off the budget with the study session on January 31st, followed by a second budget study session on February 15th, which is when the council provided input to staff on what programs they wanted to see in this two-year budget. There was a mid-year report on the current financial status in March, and the draft budget was circulated to the city council on May 19th in preparation for the May 23rd study session. And we are here this evening in hopes of presenting the budget for adoption. Some changes you might notice in the budget is that the 2017 to 19 budget has a different appearance than prior year budgets. The current budget that's before you includes both the operating budget and the capital improvement plan in one document. Historically, this has been two documents, and this is really just meant to aid the reader keeping all appropriations in one document to make it simpler for people to follow. Some other highlights of this two-year budget include the fact that many city revenues are reaching new highs. On the flip side of that, we are hearing a lot about that, the fact that the economic recovery is anticipated to slow down during these next two years. So we need to be cautious, cautiously optimistic about our revenues. Like many cities, we have cost containment challenges, there are certain line items, there are certain factors in the budget that are difficult for the city to control, and we'll touch on those in a minute, and many competing demands for resources, more, more things to do than there is money and funds to do them. So we're going to start with the general fund. The general fund is the city's main operating fund, and this is where the vast majority of city finances are funded. And the tax revenues by source, this chart here shows the city's top five revenue sources. And so you can see that property tax is 30% of the city's overall general fund budget, the largest part of the budget, followed by sales tax at 27%. And I would like to remind everybody that this 27% is, does not include the community enhancement funds. This only includes the city's 1%, standard 1% sales tax. So the community enhancement fund, additional revenues for that is held and accounted for separately and is not included in the general fund operating budget. The next one is transient occupancy tax at 7.5%, and this is the 12% tax that folks staying at our hotels pay, followed by 7.3%, which is the utility users tax, and this is a voter-approved tax that is, appears on all utility charges in, for city residents, followed by 4% for other taxes. Overall, all these taxes are performing very well. We've seen them grow over the last five years. We've seen positive growth. However, we are anticipating a slowdown during these next two years, as we anticipate some of them are plateauing for the immediate timeframe. some of them are plateauing for the immediate timeframe. Can't see that, I apologize. That's not showing up very, as visible. This next slide is meant to highlight general fund expenditures, and overall, this shows the general fund expenditures by category. So overall, that first category, there, I apologize, you can't even see, personnel costs. The first category, personnel costs, accounts for about 17% of the city's general fund budget. This is low in comparison to many cities, mostly because the city's police is by contract, as well as some of our other city services are by contract. The next line item is operations costs, and this is where we see most of our contracting costs. The police services contract, of that 30.9 million for the 201718 budget, about 19 million of that is our police services contract. The next line item of, that is in there is revenue neutrality. The city's revenue neutrality payment is budgeted at 8.6 million for fiscal year 201718 and 9 million for 201819, and I'm going to talk a little bit further about that in a moment. And finally, capital, we have expenditures for capital that are supported by the general fund, and those are budgeted at about $1 million in the next two years, and finally transfers out at 1.3 million. And the vast majority of what's included in transfers out is the city's debt service payment. So again, I apologize that this isn't visible on the screen.
You can see when you're right here, I'm just wondering if I'll look at that well, but it's okay.
So going on to one of the areas that I wanted to touch upon a little bit further is the city's revenue neutrality payment. So the revenue neutrality payment is the payment that the city makes to Sacramento County, when it incorporated, and it goes, it's a payment schedule that is set through 202728. And over the term of that payment, it escalates at a rate of about 2.9% per year. So overall, we see that revenue neutrality is about 17% of the city's total operating budget, and that amount is growing at a faster rate, at about 2.9%. And so if you look at that over the long term, that actually is escalating at a slightly higher rate than what we anticipate our revenues to increase out. So that's just something that's on our radar screen that we like to keep an eye on for future budgets. Another area is also the police services contract. The police services contract similarly is, makes up about 40% of the city's general fund budget, and over the past five years, has increased at about 20% over those five years. There were a few vacant positions that were filled during that timeframe, and I'd also like to point out that those last two years, 1718 and 1819 proposed, those are budget amounts, not-to-exceed amount, and historically, the police budget has come in below those not-to-exceed amounts, so we would expect that to continue. But overall, keeping an eye on cost containment for police services as well. Some other things I wanted to highlight in the proposed budget are staffing changes that were included in the budget. Some staffing changes that were included during this current year, 2015 to 17 budget, that are reflected also continuing into the 1719, include the filling of two community service officer positions in the police services contract. These were not new positions, but they were held vacant for many years during the economic downturn. Those were filled. A permit technician was hired in the building division to enhance customer service support at the counter. The city added a homeless navigator to address homelessness, homelessness concerns in the community. There are two limited-term positions, an assistant communication specialist and a special projects consultant added, and those are in the 1718 budget only, not the 1819. We've added a city arborist, as well as some additional maintenance staffing in the public works department. So those are changes that occurred during this current budget timeframe that are continuing into the next two-year budget. In the fiscal year 2017 to 19 budget, we've proposed one new position, which is a community engagement specialist to assist the city's community engagement program and outreach to the communities. And defunded positions include the assistant city manager, the accountant, and the community development permit facilitator. I would like to also add, a little bit later on, we'll go over this, but at the budget study session, council also did direct staff to incorporate 1.5 code enforcement officers into the budget to also help address homelessness concerns. And so those are called out a little bit later in the presentation, but those are not highlighted here. Other expenditure highlights, the fact that the city is also anticipating opening two new facilities during the next two fiscal year, next two fiscal years, one of those being a new corporation yard for the city's maintenance staff, and the opening of mill station. In addition, the transfers, the set aside for capital in the budget includes $750,000 for those two fiscal years for information technology enhancements that are needed to enhance the city's business applications. So as I mentioned earlier, at the May 23rd study session, there were two changes that the council directed staff to incorporate into the budget. The addition of one and a half code enforcement officers to focus on homelessness concerns in the city, that amounted to $180,000 of additional general fund support for that program in 201718 only at this point. In addition, council directed staff to allocate an additional $179,000 in 201718 community enhancement funds to the neighborhood transportation management program, phase five, and that has been incorporated into the community enhancement funds and that, and that CIP Shifting gears from the operating budget to the CIP, our capital, our five-year capital improvement program includes 70 CIP projects over that five-year spectrum in four different categories, 22 in alternative transportation, which includes bicycle, pedestrian improvement, sidewalks, et cetera, 31 transportation projects, 12 citywide projects, which includes some city facilities and IT, and five stormwater-related projects. Of those 70 projects, we are anticipating funding in 201718 for a total budget of $66 million. And I would just like to remind, we put together a five-year plan, but we appropriate for the first two years of that five-year plan only. And so for 201718, that $66 million represents both carryover appropriations, which is prior appropriations that have not been spent, as well as new appropriations. And the city historically tries to utilize restricted revenues to support the CIP program whenever feasible, and so these graphs demonstrate that the majority of the CIP program is being funded from other funding sources, the largest one being transportation impact fees, as well as grants. In 201819, the proposed CIP budget is about 14 million of new appropriations. Community enhancement fund spending by category, this was already discussed previously with our community enhancement analyst, Stacy Delaney, and this is just kind of summarizing what was agreed to with, by category, for a total allocation of 7.1 million during the next two fiscal years. And again, this amount also includes the $179,000 that was for the NTMP program. So that concludes the overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel? Actually, is this a regular calendar item? Yep. Any questions for staff?
And counsel, before you, before you take general counsel questions, Mr. Mayor, this might be an appropriate time to dispense with the conflict issue, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. We don't want to take questions and take that as an action item? We just want to do it now?
It would prevent the council from potentially asking questions about that item with you here.
Okay. So with that, I will be abstaining and recusing myself from the airshow item of the budget, so I'll step out and hand the meeting over to council member, or Vice Mayor Budge.
Madam Vice Mayor, the, just in the interest of, of avoiding any potential conflict of interest here, Mr. Terry's wife is employed by the airshow board, and so we would like to do what we've done before on larger issues, which is just to segment the decision, if you would. So all that that requires is, if, finance staff, if you could point the council to the page that has the council, city council item, there is a line item in the budget which is the funding source for your current support for the airshow. All we would like to ask, consistent with the FPPC regulations, is that you segment this decision, which simply means that on the, the single funding line item related to the funding source for the airshow, and therefore the potential funding source for Mrs. Terry's employer, that you indicate by a vote of the council that you're satisfied with that line item. If you do that, then Mr. Terry would be allowed to return for the rest of the vote and the vote on the whole budget.
Okay, so you're looking, you're looking for any discussion and potentially a motion on whatever that particular line item is?
Yes, please.
Do we have a slide for that?
I do not have a slide for that, but it was included as an attachment to the staff report, if that's helpful. It's on, if you look at attachment one of the staff report, it's a financial summary. In the city council budget is $1,053,500, and that includes all of the various support for community foundations, including $100,000 if support for the airshow.
Okay. So, but are we, are we looking for a motion on 1. some odd million, or are we looking for a motion on whatever the portion of the airshows?
Because it's embedded in the line item, just the, your, a motion for that amount, for the, the line item amount, with the understanding that that's, that the airshow funding comes out of that.
Okay. Kim, what was the number again?
The budget for 201718 is $1,053,500, and for fiscal year 201819, that amount is
Thank you very much. Could we have a motion of support for that item?
Okay. So are there, are there any questions?
No.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
Okay.
Okay. Call the roll.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
And for the record, Mayor Terry is recused.
And with that, Mr. Terry is allowed to come back and participate in all other matters, including the final vote on the item.
Okay. And here he comes.
You can keep looking.
Wrong door.
So I have a couple of questions. In the work session, we talked about the, the adjustment of homeless services from our POP team to code enforcement. Apparently, we have almost 100% of our POP team effort going towards homeless operations, and the proposal would be to replace 100% of the four officers with one and a half code enforcement officers. That on its face doesn't seem to add up for me. How does that work?
What was that?
We're, we appear to be replacing 80 to 100% of POP operations, which are currently homeless.
I'm, I'm going to ask.
Switching some of that to code enforcement, using one and a half code enforcement officers, I'm not understanding the math.
Thank you. Councilmember Sander?
Curt Haven, Director of Economic Development, Neighborhood Services, with Chief Pittman. We'd like to say that there's, there's a couple of plans that are floating out there. We would like to see a hybrid plan with the permission of our city manager, and we'll, there's discussions that the chief and I are having with a larger group to talk about what's the best way to bring this service to our city. The plan isn't completed yet, but we'd like to have a little more time and spend that with our city manager and our, our leadership group to come up with that. It is important, and we agreed at the last budget meeting, that our POP officers get released from some of this duty, and, and they work in the community, but spend more time in the community. We all agree that that's something we want to go for. We have since discovered that probably just using code itself doesn't have some of the, the teeth and some of the, you know, authority that our police would have, so I, we believe that, we still believe, right?
Yeah.
That some kind of a hybrid program would probably, is going to serve our community the best. I don't have that ready for you yet.
Actually, if I may just add to that, the, the thought of, the reality is that today we have a portion of our law enforcement, and also a portion of our code enforcement that deal with homelessness. And having looked at the program, we feel like, A, we do need to streamline the process, we also need to identify places where we could possibly outsource some of the work. To give you an example, we now are seeing that some of our POP officers are dealing with the properties, and the disposition of the property that's owned by the homelessness, by the homeless individuals. What we would like to propose instead is to explore the possibility of having a private company to do that, to, to outsource that service, free up some of the, the time from the officers, and also bring some additional code enforcement staffing to oversee the program. So this is really redesigning of what we do now, and streamlining, and, and also ultimately removing some of the responsibilities that various members of the code enforcement and police department have with the program. So the, I think the, the way we would like to propose it is to, for the council to authorize the 180,000, I believe, the number that we have, and allow us some time to work a program that addresses the homelessness problem adequately.
Are there others who have a private firm handling that sort of thing, or is that something new that the city of Ranskerdova would be creating?
Well, we, we like to be innovative, and we, we really like to find a way. I think there are, there could be possibilities that at least, you know, just to give you an example of some of the work we, we do, we have to find storage, we have to transport them, the, the belongings to a place, hold on to them for a period of time, and there may be ways that we could just completely outsource that responsibility with some oversight from either code or police department staff.
Well, if that can be done, it's a really good idea, because we need, we need the POP officers to respond to the broader community issues, which didn't go away just because we, we needed to focus them on homelessness, and we need code enforcement to, to finally begin to address some of the commercial problems that have, have simply had to sit pending because code enforcement is busy doing residential and homeless stuff.
We're also looking at other cities and agencies, and the county sheriff department has grants where PD and code are working together to possibly raise some money that way, so a little more time is needed to research those grants also.
That makes me think about when we went to the National League of Cities and told them that we had all these organizations working together, and then dropped their jaw to the floor, because, you mean, they actually work together? I said, yeah, they actually do. So if we could have another new way of doing things that sounds like now it wouldn't be anything you would find anyplace else, something that we're doing here in Ranskerdova, I think that would be another, something we could show others how it can be done, if they're willing to do it. But it wouldn't change the budget, the amount of money that's already shown there, correct?
We, the discussion we had at the, the discussion we had at the work session that was to allocate $180,000 to this program, so that number is what's being presented to right.
Okay. So that's a, but it's sort of an opener or something? It's a placeholder?
At this point, it's a placeholder. We have to, frankly, we also need to look at the effectiveness of the program.
Right.
I'm not, I'm, we're not prepared to come to you and say, we need X number of police officers or X number of code enforcement officers dedicated to program, because we haven't tested the program yet. We don't know exactly what it looks like. So this would allow us to put additional resources into the program, and also look for alternatives and different options as part of this program.
So the only other aspect of this is, there's another switch we were trying to do. I don't know if it's been accomplished yet or not, but it could have budget impact. For about six years, we've been trying to move some aspects of parking enforcement to. We've been trying to move some aspects of parking enforcement to code enforcement so that they can, instead of just citing a vehicle that's on a property, they can also cite it when it moves to the street. Because otherwise, we've sort of been stuck with PD having to do the street, and code having to do the lawn or the driveway, and people play games while we sort of try to, well, now we got to call somebody different. And it also confuses our residents. So I know we've been trying to make that switch. Have we done that switch yet? Because that could also have an impact on these lines.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Carrie Simpson, Neighborhood Services Manager. We are actually working on it. And Councilmember Sander, it's a little different from that. It's actually sharing some of the tow responsibilities, because the problem we have are, people do like automotive repair on a property, and then they get cited by code enforcement to do something with the vehicle, and then they put it on the street, and then parking control comes out, tags it, and we get that back and forth. So we're actually currently working with the police department. We have the program set up so that we would be able to tow in those types of cases, and we're working to get, we've got DMV access, and we're working to get like a training so that we can continue to collaborate. But we don't see taking it, we see being additional to and actually making it an improved service. So yes, we are--
That's how I intended to state it.
Yes, yes.
Because there's sort of a, there's a ripple now, and we need that to be a smooth exchange.
Correct, and some people that are working the system understand if they just keep moving their vehicle, they buy time. So appreciate it and thank you.
Because then another agency has to respond, and yeah.
No, we got a great collaboration going, thank you.
All right, those are the only questions I had immediately.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Bob, any questions?
Yeah, I talked to our finance director earlier today. And is this a time to put in that request? What I'm asking is, for those of you who are able to go to the Memorial Day celebration, and we had that video, the Korean veterans who weren't there can now, when this is finished, they'll be able to go to YouTube and see that, and listen to the consul general from Korea talk about how much their work and their sacrifices are appreciated by the people of Korea. And a good part of my $4,000 of my $10,000 goes for the video on this. It's gone up some, but for the Veterans Day and Memorial Day, it would be $6,600, $3,300 each event. And I was wondering, and I wanted to ask, if the rest of the council members would approve that $6,600 to pay for the video so we can continue doing this? Because we had some wonderful programs and some wonderful speakers who were not videoed until we started this about three years ago, four years ago. And I would like to have this done by the, either the regular general funds or by the Measure H money, I don't care which one. But we're talking about a total of $6,600 for the year.
And who are we funding?
So if, okay, so, yeah, so if we're clear about this, then there is a video that's made both at Memorial Day and at Veterans Day, and that's getting uploaded to YouTube so that they can, so they can watch the, watch the event?
Right, and it's been done since we first began it, I think it's about three or four years ago.
What's the $6,600 though for? I'm just--
It's the total right now--
I'm sure I'm supportive of it. I'm just not understanding the whole thing.
It's like it used to cost $4,000, and now it costs $6,600.
Yeah.
So instead of coming out of his discretionary account, it would come out of general fund or something.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm still--
Could we include this just in the sponsorships budget and try to work it there? Or go with--
Well, the city is already paying for the tents. That was something that Ted Gabler did when he was city manager.
Now, we're contracting with the community council to do all of it, starting for Veterans Day.
Well, this started in 2006. But I've been trying to get this done so when we have a good speaker like we just did, the veterans who weren't there and other people who come to that program who aren't there can see what it was. And actually, it's the first time, I think, anyplace, at least as far as I know, where you have a, an official from South Korea who is thanking the United States, thanking their veterans for what they did for the Korean War and saved their lives and their democracy. So this would be $6,600 for the year, for both of those programs, for the video. And that's what I'm asking to add to this budget to cover that. It would help me, because I'm still going to pay for the fuel for the flyover planes. I'm still going to pay for the program.
You're paying for that now?
I'm paying for that now. I'm paying for this also.
Can I make a suggestion?
We got to make a change.
Yeah, can I make a suggestion? The rounding error, basically, that we use for the traffic mitigation projects, let's lower that by whatever amount this is and put it in there. So remember, the last number that we had was 179? We're going to spend this money like four times. So $6,600 is what you're asking for? How much is the fuel you're paying for?
It's about 250, the band is 250, the program for--
Can we just round this about 10 and let staff figure out what this needs to be, but up to $10,000 for this? I'm totally fine with it, and we really haven't identified the traffic projects yet. So I had no idea you were paying for that kind of stuff. But yeah, I think that's totally fine.
I don't think any of us--
We did, we did have this discussion about whether the community council or whether we would internally handle the guts of this event.
Well, but I, and I thought it was all going to the community council, starting in Veterans Day. Actually, I discussed it, I think, more than once--
That was my understanding, that they do events, and so we're going to hand them one more, one more event with some supportive-- but I assumed there would be supportive funding, not from POP.
Right.
I assumed it would be from us somehow.
It was being rolled into their contract.
Yeah, or something like that.
So, yeah, I would be fine with upping some funds this year out of Measure H, and then hopefully, through the community council's contract, we can just figure out how to repurpose that.
Do we need a motion? Let's simply, let's simply--
Are you comfortable with this?
Put that into, take it out of Bob's discretionary account, put it into a city account, and let finance determine where it comes from.
Sure. Well, yeah, because the contract with the community council is general fund, so we don't have to take it out of Measure H either.
Do we need a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
I'll second. Do we need a roll call?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
So I believe I had a motion by Councilmember McGarvey and a second by Councilmember Sander. Is that accurate?
That's fine.
Well, you got two seconds, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Sander?
Just to clarify, is this $10,000 is what we're talking about?
Up to $10,000.
Up to $10,000.
And the clarification is that the bottom line would stay the same, that we will make some adjustments in some line item to--
We'll leave it to you to figure it out, yeah.
And we, this is some sort of a handoff to the community council. We'll figure out how to do it. All right, got it.
Can I clarify? That is still the plan, right? Because the last time, I know I sent my email to Shelley saying I didn't need to speak on Monday, and I interpreted the stuff fine, and she said, "We're not running it yet." So that is the intention by Veterans Day.
That is the intention, that's right.
Okay. Do we have an aye?
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry?
Aye, and God bless you, Bob.
Wow.
I had no idea you were doing that.
Thank you very much, and so do the veterans, and, 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 thanks. Yes.
Was that it? Okay, Linda? I think I'm good.
Is it?
So with that, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no speaker cards on this item.
For the budget? You all came here?
Too big and complicated.
There's been a lot talking today. It's totally fine.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do have one additional question I missed. Cyrus, there's a, oh, gosh, now I've lost on my agenda here. There's a full-time employee salary schedule alteration. I see a resolution for, I don't see any data for.
Kim, you want to--
So the full-time employee salary schedule is in here that's to 2016-17, as well as the 2017-18. And that is in there with a resolution to be in compliance with the California State Code. That salary schedule is just to be adopted by the city council.
Okay, I see the resolution. What exhibit would the actual salary schedule be?
It was attached, it was exhibit, Attachment A1 and A2 was attached to the resolution.
Let me look. Oh, I do have it. Can you describe the alteration from the current to this? What's been adjusted?
So the 2016, 2016-17 salary schedule is current salaries, and 2017-18 anticipates a 2% CPI adjustment to all salaries.
So 2% to an hourly or monthly rate across the board?
Correct.
And how do we arrive at 2%? What's our, did you say 2% straight up?
Correct, and it was a CPI, we surveyed the CPI from other, our comparable jurisdictions. We have 16 jurisdictions that we compare ourselves to.
This is one of the, this is for information. This is one of the projects that SECOG is considering engaging in at a regional level to do salary comparisons, because each jurisdiction does them slightly differently. And all the electeds do not have a great deal of technical competence in looking at this and figuring out what it is. We have to trust our staff, and the thought was, boy, it'd be great if there was some regional body that said, "Here's the salary comparisons." Instead of us having to pick 16 and somebody else picking a different 16, and we're all trying to beat each other's salaries by 5%, you know, and that, all that stuff that happens.
I think that's a helpful tool. I don't think it replaces our staff from trying to find like-sized, because you have your, I mean, having done executive searches and just finished one, I think that is helpful at a regional level, but also at a state and national, depending on the positions of a lot of things. I think that's very, that would be a very helpful addition to this work.
Yep.
Absolutely.
My concern is that I can't imagine why SECOG would do it. I mean, SECOG's really skated on the, they added their authority for a lot of different things, and it was pretty easy to include flood control or, you know, some, some, some things like that, given that they're both a planning, a COG as well as an MPO. But salaries?
This is the--
It's a Sacramento Bee.
This is the COG function. So what happened was they surveyed city managers and elected officials in the region, and said, "What services could we provide jointly that you don't, you're not happy with locally?" Or "Where could we save money?"
So it came out of that.
And that's, that's what it came out of. They didn't generate it, they were actually surprised by it.
Okay.
It was sort of like the group purchase of gasoline, which they're doing now as the COG function. And some agencies save just a ridiculous amount of number, or imaging, satellite imaging. You know, we all buy that stuff.
Well, yeah, and they did the GIS.
They did like a $1,000 a year contract. And El Dorado County by itself was spending $5,000 a year for the same imaging. So the savings are just--
And I got a hilarious, I got a hilarious story for you about somebody very respected that does those maps that screwed up ours that was somewhere that I'll talk about later.
They did the GIS for the, for the RUG study back six or seven or eight years ago. So it's only logical that that would be a joint purchase for the Six County region. Okay, so--
That answered my question, thank you.
All right, having no more questions, having no more public comment, I will move approval of the adoption of the four resolutions. But I have to tell you that in my agenda, there's not resolution numbers listed. So if we can assume that they're going to get plugged in--
Yes, those numbers will be added after adoption.
Okay, then I will make that motion.
So I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a second. Roll call, please.
Thank you. So I have a motion by Vice Mayor Budge and a second by Councilmember Sander. Thank you.
It was--
Mr. McGarvey, thank you.
Second by Bob.
Mike. Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry?
Aye. Motion carries? Yes, Cyrus, please.
Oh, and I, can I just add, to that discussion we just had about the Veterans Day event and the videotaping, there's a lot of great events that happen at Rancho Cervado that we should consider that for. And my guess is, our newest council member might have some insights on how to efficiently do that. End of comment.
Thank you. Cyrus?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment. I wanted to thank the finance staff for the outstanding work they did on the budget. I also would like to thank all the other staff. We have a fairly large team of staff who works for many, many months to get this document that really looks relatively easy to look at and relatively easy to understand. And a great deal of work goes behind the scenes and go, a lot of work that's put into it. So I just would like to take this opportunity to thank staff and thank the team who worked for a very long, long time to bring this document before you. And I think it's also another sign of our fiscal responsibility, the fact that we've always managed to approve a budget before the, way before the deadline, and be in a position to make adjustments as necessary. And so it's not a last-minute, midnight, 11th-hour adoption of the budget. So thank you, staff, and thank you, council, for all your support.
And I would just add that in my, this is, I guess, my fifth go at this, this was the most seamless process that we've had while still hearing from us and taking our input and making adjustments based on what we've been asking for. And compounding that with Measure H, I think, coming off much more smoothly than it has in years past. So thank you for all that you're doing. And it's amazing to think that you hadn't presented this to us yet. Like I was, as you sat down, I go, "I think this is the first time she's gotten to do this." So thank you for all your leadership in the last year. And so with that, we'll move on to 17.2, which is a resolution authorizing the issuance, we didn't do this one, right?
Correct.
Okay, by my notes, we didn't either. Resolution authorizing the issuance of special refunding tax bonds for and on behalf of the city of Rancho Cervado, Sunridge Park Community Facilities, number 2,004-1. I'll just kind of stop there. If there's any presentation to this?
Just a quick, just a quick update. So, good evening, Mayor, council members, Michelle McGay, Senior Finance Analyst. The item before you this evening for approval is the consideration of refunding bonds for CFD 2,004-1, or Community Facilities District 2,004-1, which serves the Sunridge Park development area. The district was formed in 2004 for the purpose of financing, acquisition, and construction of the public facilities necessary for that development to occur. In 2007, the city authorized the issuance of special tax bonds in the amount of approximately $13.5 million. The construction and sale of all of the units in both Zones 1 and 2 have created a diversified property ownership out in that CFD, as well as increased property values. This combination, along with historically low interest rates, have created the opportunity for us to refinance or refund these bonds, which would reduce the total borrowing cost associated with this of approximately $2.5 million with a present value savings over the remaining life of these bonds. The district expects to ultimately pass these savings on to the current and future homeowners out in that district once a final series of bonds can be issued. And that's anticipated to occur in the next few years. The only other thing I would like to note and make sure is clear is that special tax revenues are what pays for these bonds. These are not obligations of the city's general fund. And with that, I will open it up to any questions that the council may have.
Great.
Any questions from council?
We're looking for a 5% savings sort of minimum, or we don't do it?
Correct. Yeah.
I'm always for lower interest rate, you know, it's--
Sure.
Yeah. We're currently sitting at about 17% plus or minus. So we don't anticipate that we will get anywhere near the 5%, but that is what we're, that would be the stop point if something drastic happened in the market.
That sounds like the 1980s.
Yeah.
You mean, you're getting a 17% savings.
17% savings, I'm sorry.
We're not paying 17%.
Good thing we cleared that up. I like the other, it sounds better.
We're not Flint or Detroit or that other city down just south of us. Who has a really nice mayor, so I don't want to say, I don't want to say--
And if you think about it, that's what people used to have to pay to get a home.
Oh, right.
I am closing on right now, and interest rate's pretty nice. So this is a good time to get in. Do we have any public comment on this?
I have no speaker cards for this item.
It's the will of the council.
Okay, then I will move approval of Resolution 76-2017, refinancing the bonds to something lower.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry?
Aye. As you can see, she switches up, who goes first every once in a while? You'll learn this. She keeps us on our toes. So with that, it's a little late, but we do have council reports.
No report. No report.
So we will go to that.
No report.
And David is comfortable moving on. Bob?
Just one, and that was, I want to thank all of our staff and the other members of my committee that made the Memorial Day celebration the success that it was. And thank the consul general, the Korean consul general, come from San Francisco and to thank us and to thank the Korean veterans for everything they did for the people of South Korea. It could have been a complete loss, including their lives, most of them. So they are letting everyone know exactly how much they appreciate what our veterans did for them. That's what mine is. But I just want to say thank you to them.
Okay, so I did have 11 items on my list, so, so I won't, I will summarize by saying that it was one of the nicest Memorial Day celebrations we've been to, and my mother absolutely loved it. Thanks to the community council for bringing the former ambassador to Hungary to, community council and the chamber, I forget, to the luncheon. The arts were represented by a wonderful concert at KP on a Sunday afternoon and Rancho Cordova got an award from Rotary for funding the B Street Theater, coming into schools to teach our kids how to write plays. And, and, oh, by the way, Agnes came last time and talked about the FFA program and the goats that were going to state fair, and she actually got something like $500 for her goat Alameda. So she's celebrating. And then I would ask that we please adjourn in the memory of a wonderful gentleman who is one of the, Shelley always calls him the tall trees, he's one of the, basically the founding services here in Rancho Cordova. Dr. Don Seba and his dad were the optometrists in Rancho Cordova for 50 years between them. Don was in the Air Force early on and then he established his practice in optometry and worked here until he retired in 1989. And he and his wife Agnes have lived in Cordova Meadows ever since. And he recently passed away and his service is this windy, and I would ask that we adjourn in his memory.
Thank you. I'll keep my comments very brief. I just want to thank Bob again for representing us at the Memorial Day event. It was kind of impromptu, I didn't notice the ambassador luncheon right after, but it kind of worked out. Angela was able to join me and we had a great time. And I think she's now inspired to figure out how to make a Korean War theme part of the airshow this year and get him back out. So that was really wonderful and thank you to KP International for hosting the luncheon afterwards. It was a lot of fun. I just wanted to also point out that I represented the city on Saturday at the Sacramento-Telagana Association. It's the first time they've held their annual event outside of the city. They had to move it to the Folsom Community Center because they wanted two things, they wanted to have a bigger space and they also, pretty much anywhere else in town that they would hold it at would be a school where they weren't allowed to have any wine or beer or anything like that. And a lot of their members had said that they would like to have a more festive time, so they did it there. But they also honored Dan and they actually donated $1,000 to his memorial fund there as well and gave an honorary membership to Dan and gave it to Pam and to John came and got that presented to them up on stage. It was really nice. And so thank you to Anil, who was here tonight, for everything that they were doing. But it was a very nice event. There was one other thing.
I'm assuming that wasn't the city-supported event?
No.
Because that could not occur outside of the city boundary.
No, no, no. This is, this is the one, this is the dance one that they've done at Cordova High the last couple, or last year they did it there. The larger one, this only, this one attracts about 700 people. The one that they hold in Rancho is about 3,000 people, not one they're still holding at a school. Yeah. The one that was at Navigator last year, that I think we all went to at one point during the day, I don't think we all bumped into each other at the same time, that one is still happening. This is the one that was held in the Performing Arts Center last year. But good question. There was one other one that I really wanted to talk about, but I'm, I guess that's it.
In the spirit of moving things along.
Yeah, let's move along. City manager report.
The only brief item I have, council, for the past few years, we have closed the city hall between Christmas and New Year. And this year, Christmas falls on a Monday and we do get two holidays. And I was thinking about closing the city hall during the week between Christmas and New Year's. I just wanted to make sure that you haven't heard any feedback from the community. If not, we'll move ahead with the plans to close down the city hall.
I've never had anybody ever comment on that. Okay. So with that, I'm going to take my nice ordered copy here, but I think we're pretty much to the end. Any council requests for future items?